Well, all you're basically Friday night, Friday I'll be done the 20th and then I will go back. So.
Does she get any time off or is she kind of?
I think he's taken um. I think he's take, I think he gets.
Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Okay. He can carry over some time.
New Year's too, or just?
No.
New Year's Day.
Sorry, I'm taking, taking one set of customers. And then Wednesday, after lunch to another set of customers. Ninety-five thousand dollars in tire stock today, so. No, so Troy, I also said special tires.
Okay, yeah, well, actually, my dad used to work for Allen Brothers, and then Allen Brothers made you know about it.
Okay.
So my dad worked for them.
Yeah.
I used to have a new concert.
Did you? Yeah, so.
Okay. How many tires are there?
Call the meeting to order. This is the East Nottingham Township regular planning commission meeting, December 6th, 2024. Everyone hear me okay? Everyone hear me now? I lost the interest in Mike lower. Uh, please rise for pledge of allegiance and one who's side.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is public, public comment on the agenda items. Only matter on the agenda is the Hurst preliminary land development plan. So for public comment, uh, this part of it's not really a back and forth discussion. The person to just state the comment you concern, that's all. Speaker should stand up to the representative and state her name and residing township. A little later on in the agenda, the developer is here, and we'll be discussing the property. And even later, we'll have recognition of visitors. But we do welcome any public comment on the agenda items. If it's discreet, state your name and, uh, where you reside. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Jim Blue. I'm a resident of East Nottingham, and I am also the chief of the union fire company. Last week, one of our members came and made a statement that I questioned the capabilities of the fire company in handling a building of this size. I wanted to publicly state on behalf of the fire company that although the building proposed is a large structure, we have many large structures in our district, and we do rely on mutual aid of all our fires to provide support. So, uh, I review the statement made from the member of our company and just want to assure you all that we are capable of handling, um, various sized buildings, pretty much any of these in front of us. I just wanted to reassure you, the fire company is in good hands and capable of responding to emergency, late, private, and daily, three hundred sixty-five days.
But just to be clear, I understand and I appreciate what you just said, um, but for tall buildings, you do need assistance from other, um, fire departments, correct?
We are a full-service fire plant with good aerial ladder, multiple engines, compressing capabilities. We can reach buildings between four and five stories in height with the use of our aerial ladder.
What does that translate in feet?
Forty foot.
Thank you.
Any more further questions and answers we can deal later on in the agenda.
That's all I have to say.
Would you consider staying in case I have to call some?
I can circle.
I'd appreciate that. Anybody else want to speak?
I'd like to.
Yeah?
I'm just, uh, concerned, do you have plans to mitigate the increased traffic?
Okay, we are, we are going to get to that right now, it's just the approval of the agenda.
Okay.
So we will get to the discussion of the, of her. But right now, it's just, is everyone okay with the agenda?
There's no further comment. Take motions from, uh, to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have the meeting of last month's meeting, uh, the minutes of last month's meeting, November 18th. Uh, if everyone's read them and they've studied them, take motions to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, moving to the subdivision of land development of the Hurst farm, preliminary land development plan, the revised plan dated 12/6/2024, and a STANTEC review letter 12/12/24. So is there anyone from a Hurst here ready to talk? Oh yeah, go back there.
Yep.
You have the screen available too. Do you want to give a microphone, is that easiest way or how?
Yeah.
You want to just leave it over there to try to do a presentation?
You can speak into that microphone and look at that presentation.
It might be easier if I just, can you guys hear me okay? Like whoever just got a point. Yeah, that way it might be a little bit easier if I can kind of point, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course. All right, good evening, everyone. My name is Matt Adams, I'm a member of Nottingham Ventures LLC, we're the equitable owner of the property. Uh, we've been working on this project for about two years now, two years as of September. Uh, we've had this particular plan in front of the township since March. So we've been working on this. I'm glad everybody came out, we're going to try to do our best to address as many questions as you guys have. I brought our traffic engineer, who wrote the traffic impact study, which many of you have probably seen or read. Uh, also, our civil engineer is here, uh, on behalf of the design of the site as it relates to stormwater. Any other additional questions as the, as the flow of the site? And then Troy Gudinski here as well, from, uh, the Hur food company, if there's any specific questions, uh, for Troy. So again, just for everybody's edification, the project is obviously on 2480 Baltimore Pike. It's about a hundred and twenty-three acre site, zoned industrial I-1, and we have four buildings laid out. Uh, these are industrial zoning, these are proposed warehouse buildings, um, ranging in size from four hundred and forty-five, five hundred, down to the smallest building about a hundred and forty thousand square feet. Each building has roughly about one parking space per thousand square feet, so in total, you're a little over a thousand parking spaces. Again, these are designed in accordance with the township's ordinance. So if a user came in and didn't need as many spaces, we talked about potentially putting some spaces in reserve. Uh, but again, they're designed to a market standard, which is roughly one parking space per thousand. And when I say we've designed them to a standard, uh, you can't just, I know this is going to come up tonight, who's coming to the building, who's coming here, and then when are they coming? So these projects take so long through approvals and permitting. So once we go through the process of land development, that's 12 months. There's an MPDS permit which is issued by DEP, that's a 12-month process. So if you came to me and said, I want you to build a warehouse on a vacant piece of ground, it would take roughly 24 to 36 months to have something up and running. A lot of these companies just don't have time. So what we do is we go in, we get the buildings approved, so that we're ready to go. So when a tenant is identified, we already have a permit, we're ready to start building based on their specification. So that's the reason why we don't have a tenant identified. Uh, these are kind of generic layouts, and we just try to do the best we can with, uh, designing. Again, you can see they're kind of just boxes for now. Again, is the parking going to change? And then, you know, everybody's concerned is what is the ultimate use going to be? How many trucks, when are they going to run? And I know there's a lot of concern. So what we've done, and Chris Williams from Bowman, the engineering company for traffic, is here tonight, uh, as it relates to traffic, the uses, and we can get into that in detail. But again, just giving you guys a layout, you have Grave Road over here to kind of the southwest. Uh, the residents along Graves, there's a wooded patch here. Everything that you're seeing on the screen in green is kind of wooded wetland areas. And then there's a red area, which is a 50-foot buffer that the township has off of wetlands. So, uh, main access to the site is off of Graves Road, excuse me, off of Baltimore Pike. There's a railroad crossing that we got from the East Penn Railroad. So that's all been reported, that's a 50-foot wide, uh, actually signalized crossing there. Um, that railroad is currently active and is used by the Hur food company. They get about five deliveries per week, um, smaller trains. So there's really nothing coming through here on a regular basis, but they will be, um, a, a full crossing. So crossing guard come down, lights everything, uh, all signaled, and that will be paid for by us. So, uh, we're here tonight, and again, I apologize that the folks haven't been here earlier. Again, we've been in front of this committee seven times since March, maybe six times that we've come in here and, and kind of discussed a lot of issues. We've submitted, uh, plans, got review comments from the township's engineer, who is STANTEC. He's also present tonight, responded to those comments, came back, made presentations. Um, so we've done a lot of this, so tonight, we're on our, I think, our second turn of plans, and we've responded to your engineer's comments. That's when I say your engineer, East Nottingham's engineer. We got comments back as of December 12th, and from our perspective, we feel we can comply with all the outstanding comments that wouldn't require a new plan submission. So we're really here tonight, uh, to discuss plan specifics as it relates to the STANTEC engineering letter. But there's so many here, so many people here tonight that we want to just address everything while we're here. Um, I know there's a lot of people that just don't want the project. Um, and again, we can, we can try to talk through as much as we can, but at the end of the day, this is kind of, uh, what we're looking to do on the site. Uh, we're, we're excited to get out and market these properties, uh, to potential corporate users, to be able to try to find somebody that's going to come in and add jobs. And again, from a tax basis, and just to be clear, there, I know there's a website out there that has a lot of information about issues relating to this project. This project's going to be fully built out between 1.5 and $2 million in taxes. No schoolchildren at all. 1.5 to $2 million to the Oxford Regional School District, and it's not going to bring any students. So I just want to be clear, it's not something where, you know, it was talking about the taxes are going to be borne by the residents. There's going to be earned income tax from the folks that are working at these facilities. And then ultimately, once it's fully built out, you know, again, the, the school taxes will kick in. So I just want to be sure that that was clear as far as how the taxes work, uh, for a project in this scale. We've done a lot of these economic, um, development where you actually have to project those, those costs for folks in the, in the, in the community, so they understand how many jobs are being created, the average earned income of each one of those jobs, once you identify the tenant, the construction jobs associated with the project, and so forth. So I just wanted to kind of get that on the table as far as the taxes are, are associated with the project. Uh, and there was another comment as related to improvements, and the improvements for this project being borne by the taxpayers. This road that we were fronting on, which is Baltimore Pike 272, that we proposed improvements in West Nottingham, are all state roads. So all of those improvements, as far as potholes or anything, it'd be no different than Route 10, Route 1, or anything else. So they are state roads. As it relates to, um, the traffic study, we comply with PENDOT's regs. So PENDOT will have warrants as to what improvements need to be done based on projected, uh, traffic counts and volumes based on the particular uses that we've identified. So what we tried to do was be as conservative as we could, and we're going to talk about that tonight as it relates to how much volume of traffic could we actually put on here based on these uses? And, you know, Chris is here tonight to get into detail, but, you know, those particular uses that are taken into account in the traffic study, and then projected out to PENDOT, who then has to review these. So they review them all over the state, um, and the improvements associated with the project would then be, uh, the issuance of an HOP permit, a highway occupancy permit. So, uh, that was from a traffic perspective. And then, uh, another gentleman was here from Union Fire. Uh, it is going to have an ESFR sprinkler system in each one of these buildings. Uh, ESFR is an early suppression, uh, fire protection. So at the end of the day, it's a, it's a high-volume, um, water flow head for each one of these buildings. Um, you know, the heights of these buildings can't exceed 35 feet, but they'll all be designed to that kind of ESFR modern, uh, standard for each one of the buildings. So. So I, I guess, uh, Mark or Eileen, as far as how you want to go through this? Do you want to go through the comments on the engineer review letter? Do you want to do public comments? Uh, how do you?
I think what we'll do first is we'll ask some questions.
Okay.
And then take it from there.
Yeah, that's Joe and Chris, if you guys want to, want to talk. It's likely easier if you, this one, just so we can point to the plan, or you want to go up to this one? Just so we can kind of address everyone. Do you mind taking these?
I know last, um, planning commission meeting, you had stated that you would use the buy right.
Correct.
The date of the buy right, is that one from July 15th?
Uh, July 15th, updated, one of the most recent things you've got. December 6th would be the most recent.
Changes been made to that?
Uh, it's recorded, so it's the most recent STANTEC review letter at that time.
Can you speak up louder, please?
Sure, yeah, so we had submitted the plan as of December 6th. Uh, that plan was based on comments from STANTEC's, uh, prior letter, which we've gotten the most updated letter as of December 12th, is the, the letter that we're referencing tonight.
Extended for that?
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I can answer that question. So the municipal planning, uh, in the state allows 90 days. So when we submit the plan, municipalities have to render a decision within 90 days. Uh, so we've been granting those extensions as we've been working with the planning commission.
They're granting a month, a month, a month.
Yeah.
But, um, there was a difference in the last one, the square footage, uh, being reduced in some of the areas. Now, can you address why?
Yeah, so with our initial submission, we weren't informed of the latest stormwater ordinance where we had a 50-foot buffer around the wetlands. So the revised plan that you see up in front of you identifies that a red area, uh, in three, in three steps, there's a minimum, absolute minimum, there's a 10-foot area, there's 25 feet, and then there's 50 feet. So we revised the buildings and the impervious coverage to avoid those wetland buffer areas, except where we need to cross them with our driveways. And that reflected in a reduction in the proposed distribution warehouse number one, and, uh, a reconfiguration of some of the parking that was along that wetland buffer.
Thank you.
You want all the questions?
Yeah.
I'll address the elements in the room, the height. And you, I knew you had stated at the last planning commission meeting that if you weren't granted the height, that you would look for a variance, and if not granted the variance, you would look for hardship.
So this plan that you're seeing today is just a buy right plan. So we're proceeding with just a buy right plan with the 35 feet, and then in hopes that the conversation would continue, potentially about height, or we would be coming in on a case-by-case basis if we found a user that needed the additional height. And really, the height, when we had come in about two years ago, a lot of these buildings, obviously, we don't have a, a user identified. Uh, a lot of the companies today are obviously going higher, uh, allows them to rack product higher, it's more efficient. They have material handling equipment that can go higher. Uh, so we went in for a hot, we, you know, kind of looked at a higher, uh, building height ordinance originally. But really, at the end of the day, if we were to get height relief, it would probably be about 36-foot clear. Uh, the ordinance allows for 35-foot to the outside of the building, so.
36-foot clear interior, what does that translate to exterior?
Yeah, so we talked about that. So depending on the roof pitch, like depending how wide the building is, you need about a quarter inch per, uh, foot of fall. So for a 100-foot building, you know, you're, you're talking, I mean, it's, it would be maybe six to nine feet of relief based on these floor buildings.
So if you had a 35-foot exterior height clearance.
It'd be about 42 in a worst-case scenario, on the biggest level.
You'll get at least one more tier of pallet racking in there.
Correct. Correct.
So I just put together some really simple numbers so everybody here can see what we're looking at when it comes to track. And I know you have a traffic engineer, he's going to.
Sure.
Go through with his study, but, you know, fairly modest in a, in a modern warehouse that's fully automated, 60% floor coverage for pallet racking. I think we can agree it's probably closer to 73% to 77% floor coverage. But 60%, uh, the amount of square footage that you have here, you would gain on one tier of pallet racking, 651,300 square feet. And that translates to, average tractor trailer is 416 square feet. So you do the math on 60%, 651,300 square feet, you're looking at an additional 1,565 trucks in addition to what you have. Not saying that's going to be daily, monthly, to fill that space, you're looking at an additional 1,565. If you have five tiers at 60% coverage, it will take 7,825 trucks to fill that space. That's just simple math. I'm sure there's other formulas that you use, but that is just a math, and you're basing it on the percentage of, of the floor that's going to be covered in pallet racking. That's what you're going to look at, the amount of trucks that are coming into this warehouse.
Yes.
And now you've mentioned cold storage too. If it's cold storage, I'm sure there's some farmers in the room, produce doesn't last long. There's going to be really quick turnaround, which means a lot of trucks on a daily basis. I just want to make sure everybody here is aware of what we're looking at. As we increase height, it depends on the amount of trucks in addition to what's already coming.
Yeah, so just so I can clarify, so the, the cold storage, we originally came in, we've seen cold storage buildings upwards of 100 feet high. I mean, you've probably seen a couple in line. A lot of the cold storage users today are using the cube to go as high as they can from an efficiency standpoint, just because their material handling equipment can go higher. So you're seeing the, the freezer and cold storage guys going between 60 to 90 feet high. So that was the original, we didn't know who was coming here. I don't see a cold storage user using a building that's 36-foot clear, just because, again, how that, that business has kind of evolved. Uh, but to your question, as it relates to, uh, truck trips associated with this, and Chris can talk a little bit more about the ITE manual, which is kind of the, uh, you know, kind of sets precedent on each particular use and a subset of buildings that they've kind of collected all that data. And those buildings, I think, on average, would probably be 36-foot clear and higher in that subset of, 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 uh, traffic generated for what we use for that land use code. So I don't know, Chris, if you could kind of talk maybe about how, uh, ITE collects the data for each land use.
Yeah, so absolutely, so, thank you, Matt. Um, so this is not, not unique, uh, pretty typical. When you do a traffic study for a warehouse use, sometimes you know who the end user is, you know who the tenant is, and you can prepare the studies based on the specific characteristics of the end user. We don't have an end user in mind for this site at this time. So we're basing our traffic study on data for other typical warehouses. There are about half a different, half a dozen different types of warehouses that are available to us. Um, because we're on a state road, we have to get a PENDOT permit. PENDOT has a clear process that we have to follow. We have no choice but to follow their process as to how we go about estimating the traffic that will be generated by the use. So they have a process. And their process, again, this is the process that we use when the end user is unknown. So basically, cutting to the chase, with their process, it comes down to one of two warehouse uses that they would suggest that we would use. One is a general warehouse, and the other is a high cube, transload, and short-term warehouse, is what they call it. Right, so it's one of those two options, and usually you would go with the, you would always go with the higher of the two for planning purposes, higher in terms of traffic. So we followed that process, but we actually went outside of that process. So we selected a warehouse use that generates even more traffic. Not because we think that's what we are going to be generating, but we wanted to be conservative. So we're assuming a warehouse type, a warehouse use that generates more traffic than what PENDOT would say we should estimate. And we did that for one reason, and that was just to be conservative in our plan. So we've assumed a, for the purposes of the study, a high cube fulfillment center warehouse. We don't know that's what it's going to be, we just don't know at this time. But that's the use we've assumed because it generates more traffic than just a general warehouse. And again, we wanted to be conservative in our plan.
What's the truck trip rate you're using on that?
I'll get, so I'm going to tell you, so for the total square footage of warehouse, which, what is the total square footage?
It's changed a little bit.
Yeah.
It was 1.12.
Yeah, so. So it's dropped a little bit.
Yeah, for your side.
All right, so we've assumed 1,120,000 square feet, it sounds like it's come down a little bit. So I'd say that's another factor of safety in terms of the projections. So just to give you an idea, the total traffic that would be generated based on that IQ fulfillment center warehouse, we're looking at a daily traffic number of 2,066 trips. So that's 1,033 in, 1,033 out. That's over the course of a full day. So when we do a traffic study. When we do a traffic study, when we do a traffic study, we focus on the peak hours, right? So every traffic engineer, every traffic study that is prepared, we focus on the peak hours, right? We focus on the morning rush hour, we focus on the evening rush hour. Why? Because that's when traffic is busy as today, that's when employees may be coming to and from work, but that's when traffic is at its worst. When, when highway projects are designed, they're always designing and planning for the peak hour. So we focus on the morning peak hour, we focus on the evening peak hour. So in the morning peak hour, based on a high cube fulfillment center, the site, a 1,120,000 square foot warehouse, would generate 168 trips in the morning, that's 136 in, 32 exiting. That's mostly employee trips. And then in the afternoon, it's 179 trips, 70 in, 109 exiting. Again, those are mostly employee trips. By far, the, the biggest percentage of traffic that this warehouse and any warehouse will generate is the employee traffic. So the truck numbers, just to give you an idea, and again, these are all based on actual studies of actual other similar types of warehouses. So the truck numbers in the morning rush hour, well, so over the course of a full day, because I don't want to hide the number, right over the course of a full day, 24 hours, however many hours, you know, the site may be open, it's 258 trucks. So that's usually half in, half out. And then in the morning rush hour, trucks 11 in, 11 out, 22 in the morning rush hour. And in the evening rush hour, it tends to be a little lighter, trucks have kind of wrapped up their business, five in, six out in the evening rush hour. So for a total of 11 in the evening. I'm not making up the data, this is based on real data of other similar warehouses that have been studied, have been counted, and have been published by the Institute of Transportation Engineering. So this is not Chris Williams' data, this is the data that we're obligated to follow.
I have, I have a question. You said, you just highlighted peak times, rush hour, things of that nature. Is it fair to say that an automated refrigerated grocery, um, warehouse would operate more on a 24-hour consistent basis?
So.
Is it fair to say that?
I, so I don't know enough, I, I'm not a warehouse operator, I don't know cold storage operations, so I, I really would be the right one to answer.
But making, making the modification to the ordinance and allowing a higher height would conceivably allow in the future a refrigerated automated grocery warehouse, is that correct?
Again, I'm, I'm not.
Okay.
I don't know cold storage.
Okay, understood. Now, if, if that is a possibility, do you have any idea how much more a refrigerated automated grocery products warehouse would generate? How many more trips that would generate than the high cube fulfillment center that you described?
Yeah, so looking at just cold storage warehouse compared to what we've assumed.
Right.
At the same square footage, again, not reflecting height, because I, I don't understand the height nuances. And, and clearly, we're hearing today that with cold storage, there is some height aspects. But just based on square footage and the data that we have from ITE, cold storage generates at a lesser rate than high cube fulfillment center based on floor area square footage. And I, I can't speak to height and, and 100-foot buildings, I don't know. But I also can tell you, we're not proposing 100-foot buildings.
So you're talking truck tractor, you're only talking tractor trailers, correct?
Mostly tractor, general, yes, that's right.
Eli Khan does have an Amazon warehouse in their portfolio, and if there was to be an Amazon last mile warehouse right here in East Nottingham, how many vans come out of an Amazon warehouse on a daily basis? I used to do a lot of work at QVC in the 90s, and the amount of UPS trucks that came out of QVC was astronomical. But I can only imagine with Amazon, which is much more busy than QVC has ever been, what that would do to this area in additional traffic, not just people coming into work, going home to work, tractor trailers coming in, going out.
Yeah, so, so an Amazon warehouse is a fulfillment center. So that is the type of traffic numbers we're talking about. So within fulfillment center are two subcategories, there's non-sort and sort. So a non-sort fulfillment center is highly automated, less people-intensive, very automated, uh, generally is, um, well, just what it says, right? So a ma, a sort facility is going to have a lot more people, and it's going to have a lot more traffic. If we had used fulfillment center sort facility, which we didn't go that route, that does generate more traffic. We're not anticipating that, we're anticipating that this will be in a, a, a modern, highly automated warehouse facility. So we're not anticipating the level of traffic, whatever the warehouse user may be, we're not anticip, we're anticipating this would be a more automated type facility.
So we don't know that though.
But as a fulfillment center, like an Amazon, if this were that, and if it were the automated type, the non-sort, manual sort, these are the numbers on the user.
Because I mean, if it's a last mile, I mean, that clearly is what it is, an Amazon last mile. They are designed to reach more rural areas, there's going to be a lot more vehicles coming out to make local deliveries, whether it's Lancaster or Berks County, that's where they're going to be coming from.
Yeah, we can talk about, yeah. Yeah, if you want me to bring it up. So, you know, we've worked in a lot of different municipalities where we don't have a, a tenant identified, so we don't know who the end user is, and it creates a lot of, you know, concern as to, well, it could be an Amazon last mile sort facility, kind of worst-case, worst-case scenario. So what we've done in the past, and what we're willing to do here, and we've mentioned this at the planning commission, we mentioned this on a call with, uh, Wes Nottingham and their traffic engineers as well, is to just every user that would come in, they say we have identified a tenant, XYZ company's looking at 300,000 square feet, we get their traffic data, we give it to Chris to update the traffic impact study based on their actual use and compare it against what we've presented to the township and presented to PENDOT. So if it jives with the traffic study, we continue forward, we build that building, they move in. So now you're saying, okay, they said they were only going to have 30 trucks. only going to have 30 truck, or 30 truck trips a day, they have 400. That doesn't, they lied to you, they lied to us. So we're going to have it, A, in the lease that we can put the tenant in default, that they, they've not complied with the information they've given us. And then secondly, it's called a post occupancy study. So six months after the building is built, we come back and we actually do truck traffic counts in the driveway. How many trucks are actually coming out of here? And compare that against the original study as well. So it would put the responsibility on the developer and a condition and a PennDOT permit to come back and say, well, wait a minute, guys, you said it was only going to be 30 truck trips, it's now 400. Your occupancy permit's in jeopardy, penalties are in jeopardy, your escrow monies are in jeopardy. So again, it doesn't, it doesn't help us as a developer to try to, to lease a building that we know is not going to work. So that's why upfront, we do the best we can to try to identify, like you're seeing here, and based on what we find is a conservative use as a, as a land use code 155. But we don't envision that really being it. I think it's going to be less, but I can't say that until we actually know. So we identify the users, we present it, we present it back to the township, it's consistent, build the building, six months after they move in, we do another traffic study to compare. So again, this is all going to be governed by PennDOT. So these roads are not East Nottingham Township or West Nottingham Township roads. I was going to say, but they're owned by PennDOT, so PennDOT issues the permit.
What happens if that happens? What happens if there's a heck of a, like, what is the report?
We are responsible for the mitigation. So maybe, Chris can probably talk a little better about kind of the PennDOT process.
So it does not serve us well to come in here and tell you one thing and then expect it to be something different. So I can tell you honestly that we are doing the best we can from a planning perspective. And, and working with Matt and Eli and their firm, I mean, they're, these are responsible developers that want to manage this through the process. It's not going to help them if the end user ends up generating more traffic than we've estimated. So they're going to be watching it closely. But as we monitor and as the development were to build out, if we were to exceed these trip estimates, which we don't expect to occur, but if that happens, we have to put the brakes on, we have to redo the studies, update the studies. PennDOT has already said that because we don't know an end user, our highway occupancy permit, and we've already been through some reviews with PennDOT, we will have to get a permit from PennDOT. And they have said that on our permit will be a condition to monitor the traffic and monitor the characteristics of each specific user that comes in. And if we exceed the traffic that we expect to be generated, then additional studies will have to be done, and then potentially additional improvements or mitigation measures, right? So if we are generating more traffic than we expect, and if there's an impact with that added traffic, it'll be, there'll be a responsibility to do the improvements that are necessary to mitigate that traffic. I can tell you, we don't expect that to happen. We really don't.
But so the traffic that you're talking about, it will, will remain, the improvements will be made on the road so that there's, you know, vehicles that can get through, but really, it's here to stay, and the traffic is here to stay. We might have wider roads, but it's essentially here to stay.
So how much time elapses between all these new studies and all the mitigations? At least we'll have to deal with the traffic while all that's still happening. Yeah, I mean-
Well, and forever. I mean, it's not going to change, because we just have wider roads. So why don't you assume, why don't you just assume the estimated trips to determine the worst-case scenario for the traffic impacts? Assume the fulfillment centers or whatever. Assume the highest amount, and then you'll know exactly what the worst, worst-case scenario is.
Yeah. I mean, we could do that. I can tell you, I don't think it's going to make a difference. I think that based on the study that we've done and the results that we're seeing, and with the improvements that are coming, right, there are improvements coming in at the 272 Route 1 interchange, Wes Nottingham has improvements slated for Baltimore Pike and 272. Those improvements are adding capacity to those intersections. We've studied those intersections, and it shows that we can accommodate this traffic. So if we were to increase it for a different use, which we don't think is realistic, I think we're going to be fine. I don't think it's going to show a problem. I've done studies using those uses as well.
Have you been in touch with the railroad to put a spur line in? Have you been in touch with the railroad?
We have, yeah. We've been, we've, we've actually negotiated a license agreement with East Penn Railroad. So East Penn Railroad runs along the north side of the entire property. As we talked about earlier, they do take active deliveries five times roughly a week to Herford Plant in Wes Nottingham. So really, it's a grade issue. I think, we've talked about this a handful of times, Joe, we had some conversations.
It's just a yes or no at this point. I'm sorry, my question-
As far as the grade elevations? Yeah, so I mean, it's about six to eight feet higher. So the whole site would have to be lifted up to a probably-
I understand that. I want to know if you've actually talked to them about getting a spur off the line to serve the warehouse?
We have.
Not to cross the line, but to serve the warehouse?
We have.
Would you agree that the rail would lower the number of trucks entering the site if you used rail?
I mean, it really depends on the use. I mean, honestly, I mean, it's kind of hard to, it's hard to tell what they're doing.
Okay. As a second-class township, excuse me, as a second-class township code charges supervisors to protect residents' health, safety, and welfare, what's going to happen when 20 tractor trailers sit idling with diesel fumes as the railroad trains go slowly by?
Yeah, so, Eli, I think I was trying to say, that rail line now, and again, I'm, I haven't, I've only seen it once, but it's only been two cars. I don't know. So, I mean, how many cars, I mean, you guys obviously know, how many cars on average?
I've seen 10.
I've never seen that many. I've never seen 15.
Okay. So there's no active crossing just up the way. So I mean, I mean, what's the longest you'd wait? Can I help maybe answer that? Like that you would wait on a public road for that train to cross?
15 to 20 minutes sometime?
15 to 20 minutes?
Mm-hmm.
I mean-
Okay, I don't want this to get out of hand.
I just, again, it's hard for me to answer.
I guess what I'm saying is, how does this development help supervisors to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the residents? Because you're allowing truck, so much truck traffic to come in here. And I've already heard some people say they have diesel issues, but I'm just wondering, if you're not seriously considering using the railroad and reducing the truck trips, you know, what's your, what's your thoughts on that? What's your, what's your reasoning for that? Is it just because you have to bring Phil in?
We haven't ruled it out at all. So if we identified a user that needed rail, and we're going to, we're advertising it as rail, we'd be talking to Joe and the civil engineer to come back in to modify this plan, to raise the grade as an amendment to the plan. But again, it's about 800,000 cubic feet of fill to get that entire site up, to get that rail to go sidebar on the side of a warehouse. So really, it's just a, it's a, it's a site constraint based on existing grades. So everything's kind of going downhill here. We'd have to import 800,000 cubic yards of dirt to make that rail work for this particular building. And it really only works up here because the grades are too steep for that particular rail. But as far as the number of trucks that would potentially be idling in the drive aisle, so worst-case scenario, Chris, what did you say? Like maybe we have, per hour, was it 20?
In the peak, in the morning, it's the highest at 11 in any one direction. So that's over the course of 60 minutes. I don't think you're going to have more than a few, you know, any one time within a few-minute period. So I don't think it's going to be very good.
So if it's six minutes per truck, I mean, you had a 15-minute, you're talking maybe on average, three trucks, and that train, I think it's coming through there, you know, maybe five times a week is what I've, what I've been told?
You talk about identifying somebody and doing development. Item number 10 on subdivision and land development on SandTech this year, item number 10 on the SandTech subdivision and land development, you said phasing is not anticipated. So does that mean you're going to build all four warehouses not knowing who's coming in? Or are you going to build, if somebody wants, you know, 140,000 square feet, you're going to build that one first?
Yeah, so I mean, ideally, just based on the way the grading works, so you'd be taking dirt from this site, and you'd be flopping it onto these. So you'd have to start with one built, right? Yeah, I mean, it would be, I mean, from an MPDS permit, is that, is that what you're getting at, maybe?
For overall, because we phase the MPDS, we would want a phasing plan in the Phase C of construction, and then we phase the S crap.
Yeah. So for this set, yeah, I mean, it's, it's not, is it proposed to be phased in your plan, Joe?
No, I asked that question in response.
This is not anticipated. So I mean, that is the definition of phasing, is one and the next.
Yeah. So I mean, again, when you say phasing over the course of, you know, MPDS permits a year, so we have to use this dirt to level up this site, so.
But if you don't have somebody identified for that site, it's not to build, right?
We would pad-ready the site, so we would do the improvement. So we'd have to, we'd have to get into those details during, you know, final land development as far as the condition, potentially, once we go in for MPDS permit. So we still have an MPDS permit that we have to submit for. But Joe, is that something you could easily accommodate as far as submitting, you know?
A phasing plan.
Yeah, a phasing plan, which I think is pretty typical. So, from a preliminary standpoint, Joe.
So you have no clue of who these tenants are going to be, but you definitely know that they want more than 35 feet interior.
100%, and you know why? Because there's 200 buildings that are available, that I've done a search for, all of Pennsylvania. And there's not a single new building being built for less than 36. So when you have corporations that are looking to open up operations in Pennsylvania, and one has 36 and the other one's 30, why would they come to a 30-foot building when they could go to 36? And it's really about pallet positions. So essentially, the building, you know, the building's higher.
Are we building here then?
What's that?
Doesn't fit.
No, I'm saying, it's just, it's just, it was an ordinance that was adopted decades ago, and the product type has kind of, I guess, modernized with technology improvements with sprinkler systems and material handling equipment. So again, you're able to use less space and be more efficient in your building, take up less ground and everything else. So I mean, it's just kind of what warehousing users are looking for in today's market. I mean, there's a lot of buildings that you'll see in Carlisle and Lehigh Valley that are 42-foot clear, which is 48-foot clear on the outside of the building. So everybody's kind of pushing the limits. We're seeing a lot of those with the e-commerce folks that are on major corridors on 81, 78. But for this particular occasion, I think the minimum for 400,000, you know, you have a couple of smaller buildings, you know, you're a minimum of 36-foot clear, is really what they're looking for.
Your geotechnical report, I'm sorry, what do you want to say, Joe?
No, just a follow-up question. I mean, unless I'm understanding things completely properly, is that the 35-foot limit is limiting. I mean, it will, I mean, and raising it will exacerbate pretty much every traffic problem from bad to even worse.
So I think what we were saying, Joe, was that the ITE takes into account buildings that aren't 36-foot clear already.
Yeah, traffic projections are based on similar type warehouses.
I understand that. But what I've learned, and, you know, again, is that when you, when you achieve a certain height, you get into a different realm of automation and efficiency. It also tends to bring, bring the business into a more fast-moving product such as groceries and refrigerated others, that cycle faster, which means more trucks more often. Am I wrong about that? Or is that, is that completely unreasonable? Or, I mean, not unreasonable.
I don't, I don't, again, I can't speak warehouse operations. What I can tell you is, we're basing our traffic estimates on other similar-type warehouses, today's modern warehouse, which is the basis of the study. So you can infer that the type of traffic that we're anticipating within a modern warehouse is what's reflected in our study.
Joe, for your question, I think I can answer. So when you talk about buildings that are higher, that have larger throughput, you typically see docks on both sides of the building? Have anybody seen that, where it's cross docks, so the product's coming in on one side, and they're taking it across the floor, separating, almost like a truck terminal, out the other. So that's a fully automated cross dock facility? These are all single-loaded. So the single load limits you to how many trucks you can turn based on how long the product takes to come in and out of the building versus, if this entire dock wall, let's say there's 50 dock positions on this side, that particular building would have 50, be the same square footage, same height, but you're moving throughput, because the product's going across the floor versus in one, in a rack, and then back out. So again, it really depends on the end user. I know we keep saying that, we don't know who it is, but that's why we're trying to put the, you know, the approach in place that we have somewheres to kind of cross-reference, okay, here's the user, here's what they're telling us their, their operations are, and we compare that to what we've already studied. We all feel comfortable. We have it in our lease that it says that, hey, you're going to comply with us, so that we have some strings to be able to kind of put a tenant in potentially default. And then ultimately, to post occupancy study would then, you know, would be the, you know, the ultimate for us to have a-
One more, one more question that I'm thinking. So over the course of the two years you've been working with this, not one prospective tenant has approached you and said, I'm interested in doing this by a 35-feet or higher?
We've had, we've had a few tenants approach us. But again, we haven't marketed the plans. This is just from our internal network of other-
So what that tells me is the likelihood of, if you get, if you get the preliminary plan approved, and you want to make modifications depending on the tenant, like you said at the last meeting, the likelihood of getting a tenant that's going to ask for 35 feet or higher is very high.
It depends. So we had two-
Well, you just said, hold on, you just said that that's what the market demands, and that's what a modern warehouse is, is 35 feet or higher. So either, either you have people in the K that want to do this, or that isn't what the market demands. I'm struggling with, you know, how do you rectify that? And how is that, how could that be the same, how could both be true?
So we've had two prospective tenants that we felt very confident in the site, one of which is already in a building that's already 36-foot clear, but wants to be closer potentially. So that particular tenant would be sacrificing height and efficiency in their current operation to come to a building. So I'd equate it to, if you had a Class A building, the most modern efficient building is 36-foot plus. If you had a 30-foot building, would you still be marketable? Yes, but you're at reduced cost. So when you're building a brand-new building, you're already building it to a substandard ceiling height. So you're already, you're kind of being pegged as product that's not Class A modern space. The second user that came in, Joe, that was looking at the 330,000 square foot buildings, had an operation that wanted to raise one section of the building. So they were okay with 35, but one section of the building in about 60,000 feet needed to go to 60-foot clear for their operation. But they also only had six truck trips a week. So again, once we identify these users, this was a local company, they've been in business for 200 years, they have multiple locations in Chester County and are looking to consolidate. But that was something no different than, you know, the township currently allows for a silo to go up to 85 feet. It allows for a barn to go up to 85.
Well, that's ancillary stuff.
But I'm saying, but this would have been the ancillary kind of function to the building. It would have been 60,000 feet on that.
So within the footprint of the building, I wouldn't say.
But I'm just saying, that would be something where we'd come in to say, well, it's an industrial use, you know, where do you accommodate this in the township? And we'd say, well, this is where we think it would be ideal, in this back corner. And again, it was just something when Joe had asked, are people asking for more than 35? And they, you know, they have.
But that example's a great example of, once we meet a specific tenant, not all tenants are the same, not all of them have the same traffic characteristics. And that's one where they have much reduced traffic characteristics than what we've estimated. So, you know, it really, we won't know the traffic until we identify the tenant, and we were tracking that animated against this study. But that's a great example of a specific user with the most traffic demand than what we've estimated.
So our ordinance obviously is 35 feet, and our job as a planning commission is to protect the integrity of our community. That's why our ordinance is 35.
Thank you.
We're not here.
So why are we even talking about this?
Exactly. Just come in and do the hike anyway. We're going to come in and go, hey, we got the tenants now, so hey, you guys got to buckle up.
So the reason we're talking about it is, you've made it clear that if you can't get the variance, you're going to go for a hardship. Our ordinance is 35 feet. If our ordinance was eight feet, and you want to build a warehouse there, okay, I could see that's a hardship. Hardship because you can't maximize your profit? I don't see that. Personally, I don't see that as a hardship. This is me as in East Nottingham Township community method.
So the plan in front of you is 35 feet. I'll be very clear, this plan that we're approving tonight, we're looking to get a recommendation on, is 35 feet. We're not asking for any-
It's not your intention at the end of the day. It's not your intention.
So our intention is to market the property to a wide, as a wide usage as we can, to see who would be attracted to this particular project. If we identify a user that has to have a certain height, I'd say that's when we would come back in and come, and that would be the point. Like, for example, this particular company, a real company based in Coatesville, needed 60-foot in the section of the building. And you could easily say, no, we don't want it. But if we found somebody that said, hey, I'm okay with 35 feet on the outside, and I can get this smaller building to 32 feet on the inside, and they want to own the building, we would build it and potentially would sell them that building. If we want to own it as a landlord, when you have a subpar-type product and you're competing with other people that are higher, that's really why we wouldn't build it until we had a tenant identified. Or a potential buyer that would say, hey, we're okay with an 18-foot clear building because we do X. We don't necessarily use racking at all. And there's a lot of companies out there that do, do these type of unique operations that we don't know how high the building needs to be. And if you say, hey, we don't want it, and we don't want to even think about, you know, raising the height a little bit for a ancillary section of the building, so be it. But, you know, there are sections of the ordinance, I mean, you can build a barn today, 85 feet. No, but I'm saying, it's, it's, but I'm saying, but you, the height is 85 feet. So you could build a, you could build a 450,000 square foot barn that's 85 feet high, and you could make a mushroom house, or you could make a hydroponic. I'm just saying, it's not, it would be a case-by-case basis.
I have a question about your geotechnical report. It indicated that the subgrade soils cannot provide adequate earth support for the proposed structures, that they recommended aggregate pier columns, compaction, grouting, and a couple other engineering feats. So what are you choosing, and how will it impact groundwater? Because groundwater is pretty high in that area.
So we've dealt with this on other projects. You know, it really depends on the particular area of the building. But, you know, we've done everything from geo piers all the way down to, you know, just general compaction. But this wouldn't be dynamic compaction, I don't know if you guys were familiar with that, but they take a big weight and drop it from a crane to try to get compaction that way. Aggregate piers is more a column that you would put underneath the footers to support- Uh, aggregate piers is more a column that you would put underneath the footers to support that weight. Uh, but those are just dog cylinders in, filled with concrete, and then the, the foundation grid and floor slabs are poured on top. So that's part of the ground improvement.
How does that impact groundwater?
I mean, you're, Joe, the other.
The limited depth does not interfere with the groundwater. Uh, there, there are approximately fifteen feet to twenty feet, and then the building is set on top of it. So typically, that's nowhere near the groundwater table where it would have an impact on groundwater.
So they said it had to go through substrate of one and two. Uh, I'm not a soils, uh, expert, but I'm just wondering what that meant.
Yeah, so typically, those would be unsuitable for compaction. So they would drill through that area to get to the bottom, and then either fill that with stone, like a stone column, that they would backfill and compact, or use an aggregate here where they actually, you know, filled it with concrete, depending on the, uh, the load that those columns should support. So again, that's part of the building permit set, that we would have a ground improvement vendor identified. That's all they do. So there's site contractors that would do all of the horizontal construction, and then there's the ground improvement folks that really do the compaction depending on the, uh, the G F D.
Okay, I'm going to ask a couple other questions having to do with environmental issues. Is that all right? I know we have height issues, but can I just come on to that? All right. So, uh, I just want to know, um, it says here in the Pindi report, evaluate all wetlands within three hundred feet of the project area. So my question is, have you evaluated the entire site for wetlands?
We have. We've had our, uh, environmental scientist, Mark Bryan, who out there. They compared their findings to the original Vortex study that was done. Uh, and they, uh, also investigated the areas where we're crossing to confirm that the wetlands that were identified previously are the same. And they're, they're, they had a conclusive, uh, report. Um, so we, he's been out there twice to the site to review.
So in its entirety, the entire, the entire parcel, even areas that you're not touching?
They've walked the whole site.
And those reports are going to go to G?
That's not really clear in that letter. The updated, we asked for an updated wetland report, which we did not get. We got a letter, a two-page letter that indicates specific areas of the site were reviewed.
Yeah, where, where they were crossed, uh, where the driveways were crossing. They still went out to the site and walked around. But their goal, from what we've received from the planning commission, was the sensitive areas where the crossings were occurring, which is this driveway, uh, between buildings, uh, two and three, between one and two, and then over here on the exiting driveway. We've also had Liberty Environmental out there, uh, who's gone out there to do some work associated with our Pindi plans. So they've also walked the site as environmental.
But as a comprehensive overview of wetlands on that property, have, do you have that report? It's, um, so it sounds like it's kind of piecemeal between different.
We have the original report that was done.
In two thousand and eight?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, uh, you need to update that.
The, according to our wetland scientists, and according to the, the Army Corps of Engineers, there isn't an expiration on a wetland delineation when they go back out to the site to validate the validity of the wetlands that were surveyed, which we did. And certainly, if there was any question that they were grade or less than, then an, an additional study would have been done. But I believe that, that we fulfilled the requirements to validate the expansive study that was done by Vortex.
I'm pretty sure ten years is the cap on the wetland. The wetland report's number one. And number two, I don't know the D E P, because even products I've done recently where we've tried to do a wetland letter update, they don't even accept it if it's that old. So, I mean, the, the letter I read was very, yeah, I said he, he walked the site and focused on specific areas. To me, that's not an updated wetland report.
Yeah, you go for one area.
And you stated that this planning commission, based on feedback they received, they only want to do the look at those crossing areas. But I'm pretty sure this planning commission said, we want you to look at the whole site.
Yeah.
So that's not an accuracy.
Well, I, I'd like to.
Because I know I lean in every single meeting and sat here and said, I want the whole thing.
They walked the site and then focused on the areas where we were disturbing the wetland, where there wasn't any disturbance, which is.
You mean like in the woods?
It's back in the woods.
Like in, in these areas, studying the wetlands within the wooded areas.
There, there's active erosion from those tree beds. And just, just two weeks ago, I was out there on the edge of that property, and you could see where the, and we were still in drought conditions. There was active erosion in that stream bed. So, I mean, two thousand and eight is totally irrelevant to what's going on on that property right now.
And when you're going to develop a piece of land, you pretty much have to do an assessment of the entirety of the property so you know what you're going to do and what the impacts are going to be to the entirety of the property and beyond the boundaries. So I'm not really understanding why you would only look at wetlands in and around what you're going to be developing. And so that's what I was trying to get to, Joe, is just, is to, it, you know, I, I would like that, but that's only one, one issue I have.
One question, the March twenty twenty-four that's in the letter, is that's a letter, not a recording?
It's a two-page letter.
It's a two-page, okay.
And, um, I'd like to know the bog turtle survey, um, that was submitted to you as fish and, well, was it submitted to you as fish and wildlife for, for review and concurrence? I know surveys were done. I'd like to know if they were submitted to you as fish and wildlife?
Yes.
For review and concurrence?
Yes, that, they're, they're.
Because I don't have that here in the Pindi report.
Uh, it's, it's, it was just completed. They were just out there, uh, they did their work, uh.
So you give a date?
It was in early November. We'll provide that to you.
So is that, is clearance on the Pindi or now?
Uh, we, we have clearance on most of the items. They're, they're still working through some of the species that were out of season.
So they don't have full clearance yet?
Right.
But the bog turtle.
I'm not getting that.
The bog turtle has to, at least if the bog turtle was.
The bog turtle was clear, the serpentine barrens clear. There, there was just some.
I don't have anything that tells me any of that at all. And I don't even know, uh, when you're supposed to go out to do bog turtle surveys, if November is the real time for that, because things dry up.
So, so he, he's referring to the plant species that had gone out.
Which is also in May, June, July, August, September.
So the bog turtle study, you're referencing the phase two bog turtle that was, was done, uh, in May of twenty twenty-three.
The other Pindi, uh, studies, though, really should be done between May and, and maybe September. But, you know, the permit that the person got to go out was dated October ninth. And the other person, it was, it was in March. I have no idea if she went out in March. I have no idea where they went on the site. So, you know, there's just no information from my perspective to even see where they went and what they did. And there's still a lot of openings on the Pindi report from D C N R. Like, I haven't heard anything that they're, that they're, you know, checking off, yes, we have no concerns with this, you know, with this, uh, development, nor, um, are those species present on, on the site. So that's, that's some concern, uh, that I have.
So we, we deal with this a lot? I mean, just being out of season when you're trying to study for, uh, plants or bog turtles? So it's a conditional third-party permit that we're going to be receiving that typically the plants would be conditioned upon, no different than an M P D S permit. And that's not the answer you want, but again, what we.
No, I don't.
If you're asking us to wait until April to look for the plants, I mean, it's, it's just something that we shall comply with, you know, the, obviously, the Pindi clearances and, and complete all of the necessary third-party permitting, like M P D S. So.
You know how I feel about conditional, conditional approvals.
I mean, I, I could tell you, M P D S-wise, I mean, when you submit an M P D S permit, the plans change, then you have to go back and resubmit the M P D S permit. So typically, you would wait for the plan set to be preliminary approved and then go to M P D S.
Meanwhile, though, you're putting a plan forward where the, that smallest, um, what, uh, one hundred thousand and four, one hundred and forty thousand square foot area is smack dab in the middle of where a lot of these areas are. So, you know, I don't feel comfortable with conditional approval, knowing that some, you know, it could potentially change. Everything could potentially change. The traffic could potentially change. The species there could potentially change. We don't know, we want your approval. You said in the last meeting that you intend to move forward with what you say is a buy-rite plan, but you really have no intention to develop this plan at all, as is. Your, your intention is to go higher, not smaller, higher.
So I mean, as far as the third-party permits go, I mean, so we're in, we're in front of the township planning commission tonight, obviously, for a preliminary land development. Typically, the details that you're specifying that relate to a third-party permit are conditions of that approval on a preliminary basis. It wouldn't be recorded on a final plan until all of that was done. So this entire plan set has to be updated, resubmitted, and this entire process starts over again to go through to make sure all of those things are done. But as far as the plans go, um, this wooded area is not going to be able to get cleared without an M P D S permit, which would obviously trigger that third-party conditional report as it relates to the, you know, the plant species, uh, inventories, fog turtles, and everything else. So again, once the plan is preliminary approved, we would then move forward with an M P D S permit submission for stormwater and continue to work through Pindi.
I know the intention is not to move with this particular plan. It is to move with a higher, higher plan. You said it, why would I buy, why would I build anything that is, that's not going to be useful at the time I build it?
Exactly.
You've got to push it through, and then you're going to negotiate a change after the fact. Pretty simple, I'm not a rock and soft person, I can see that. Hey, Marty, when somebody tells you they're going to do something, believe them.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yes.
So your plan was to go through preliminary, and then as, depends as people come in, is then it going to go to a point where you can phase the final?
Correct.
So we're talking about going to a zoning hearing to get the. What's your hardship?
So it would really depend on that particular use. So if the hardship was an ancillary section of the building that had to be higher for a specific operation in the industrial district, where that use is not allowed anywhere else in the municipality, that would ultimately be our case to come in and say, this doesn't allow it anywhere in the township. We would like to consider a variance relief for this section of the building to exceed the thirty-five-foot height limit. If and when we were identified a particular use, come in and discuss their building operation. Because right now, as far as I'm aware, there's nowhere in the township that allows you to go over thirty-five feet for industrial use.
And that's not hardship, I mean, that's not a hardship.
So what's the hardship? Because criteria for the hardship is not hardship to you, it's, absolutely, it's hardship to the land.
I mean, we did.
No, no, that's not, that's not a hardship, that's a hardship in the area.
I agree.
Okay, so my question is, what would be your hardship?
So from a hardship perspective, I mean, we're thinking relief for this particular use. It would be a functionality of the building depending on the use. So if somebody needed a section of the building to be higher, and again, this is all hypothetical until I identify somebody. This is an industrial district. So this could be, uh, you know, again, we've kind of spelled it out as kind of a, a warehouse use. But if there's a fulfillment operation that has a small mezzanine in it that needs a section of the building to be higher, that would be something where the, the use is permitted, but the hardship would be that you don't have anywhere in the industrial district that allows for this additional accessory use to go over thirty-five feet. So it's functionally, it functionally don't allow, uh, a user to occupy, uh, a industrial building.
If I can add a.
Like, where, where else would you be able to build it then?
May I make a point of clarification?
Sure.
So just as a, a quick reminder, the township is not standalone. Your township is part of the Oxford Region Planning Committee. So it, the, the requirements change a bit when you're looking outside of just the township. So the township doesn't have to provide for every available use because you're part of a greater group of municipalities.
Well, my next question is, it feels like you're forcing the board's hand by only giving it one month extension. And like, the extension, the next board meeting was on the sixth, at the, 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 the beginning of the year.
Free or?
Free or meeting, and the regular one. You're only giving it one month extension, and you're not giving it breathing room. And I think you've read about conditional use, and conditional, uh, conditional approval. I've seen conditional approvals based on thirty lines in a letter, and circumstances change. So why not give the tension a breathing room to be able to look at this plan and get it a little bit further down the line, a little bit better understanding than just taking it month to month? And there's no legal rule that. If the board either has to approve it or not approve it, then that's needed.
So I think we're here tonight to find out what items are outstanding. Again, third-party permits to us, and, and again, it, it sounds like you have experience in the municipal world. A third-party condition for a permit that, that we don't control would be hard to kind of wait until we got that to be able to seek, uh, uh, preliminary approval before pursuing with D E P.
It happens, it happens in other townships.
I nev, I, I mean, again.
It happened up in terrific township, didn't it? C S three logistics, this supposed tenant that we don't have, and pulled the same stuff up there. So, you know, I've done my homework. I've been following this project for over a year now, and I've done my homework. For you to say that you don't know who the tenant is, that's a bunch of blawdy.
A hundred percent.
That's the one tenant, that's the one tenant that you don't know, C S three logistics.
I don't even know who that is, sir, I'm sorry. I don't know who C S three logistics is.
He must be actively marketing this property.
And if you are. If somebody could send me a marketing flyer that we have on the property, I'd love to see it. Because we haven't marketed. The only way is we market is people know us as developers and ask, do you have anything available? And we say, no, we're working on something, and we've sent them this exact plan. This is all somebody's ever seen. There's no marketing material, we don't know what it's going to cost to build.
Can we get back to the agenda so we can? Because we're not supposed to public comment yet. Somebody's got to get through this section so we can get to public comment. So if we have any more questions up here for these guys, because I know they're hankering to go. So, but there has to be some sort of decorum between us and them, and listening. So do we have, we haven't even gone through the letter.
No, and there's thirty-three open.
So.
Open things in the areas.
Do you want me to go through every?
So you wanted to see what kind of, yeah.
All right, now I got coffee, I'm good. We have it completely, this is all the other ones in this le, from this letter? Are you guys ready?
Yeah. So we all have these letter, we can use that.
Under zoning, um, open comment about, uh, clarifying setbacks. I'm such a loud Italian, I can't. I've never heard anybody tell me that before.
Stand up.
Now you're really good. Um, zoning comment number two about setbacks off of Baltimore Pike, um, for the proposed warehouse and eastern rear setbacks. Um, there's no dimensions provided on all the buildings. There are a couple of dimensions on warehouse one, but we're looking for dimensions to all the property lines to make sure that you, uh, your setbacks in the table are actually the setbacks on the building.
And that's what, that's what comply?
Comment number five, uh, was with regards to lighting. Um, didn't really get any clarification on whether you're going to be able to meet the angle of the lighting or whether you're going to go for a variance. I know at one point, I spoke to your lighting engineer kind of towards the very beginning, and he said he was going to go for a variance.
We're, we're not going for a variance, we're, we're seeking a different manufacturer that can, that can meet that cut-off criteria, which is what we're going to achieve.
So I just want to say something about lighting, because the, the species that may or may not be on the property are likely to the south, and so lighting is a big issue that I would, uh, like to address because I don't want those moths coming up and getting, getting killed over on your property, even though they might not be there, we don't really know, because it's conditional. Um, so I'm very interested in what you guys come up with with, uh, with lighting. Just letting you know.
Okay. And, and it is a full cutoff L E D light, building mounted lights or mounted lighting, which is reducing hall height and, and adjusting, uh, conformance to that angle, uh, that the, uh, that the light has to be like thirty-five degrees off the light.
Um, comment number eight also, again, in zoning with regard to the parking for employees. Um, and I'm looking at your response, but I, I have to consult with, oh, in fact, the ordinance is staying provided for each use. So there'll be a minimum one space for each employee plus additional spart, parking spaces, uh, to be provided in the application of the appropriate formula in the chart below. Um, obviously, that also has an impact to trip generation, which we talked a lot about tonight. Under some division and land development, again, the, the setback lines on the, to the proposed buildings. Um, we don't have any, and, and you indicated you're going to future submit M P D S and wetland permitting approvals. Uh, you requested a waiver, I believe, for the, uh, wetland determination. Uh, you requested a waiver, I believe, for the, uh, wetland determination, we already went over that tonight. The, uh, the letter from March of twenty twenty-four is not a wetland report in our opinion, and, um, whole study should be done. Comment fifteen in the letter was the PennDOT permit. Uh, we haven't seen any submissions you've made to PennDOT, I've seen no plans, I've seen no correspondence. So if you could send copies of what you've done so far to our office, that would be good.
Well, we've co-, we've copied the township, we can certainly copy your office.
Would you? Okay, if you could do that, that would be great. Just so we can know where you are in process. I didn't even know you submitted to PennDOT, so that just helps to know what they're saying about the project.
Yeah, so we have, we have scoping review and approval from PennDOT on the traffic study. We've submitted the traffic study to PennDOT, we've received a reset of review comments from PennDOT. They're all very reasonable, uh, you know, from a traffic standpoint.
We'd like to see.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand, from a traffic standpoint, I think we're close to buttoning up our traffic issues. Um, we had a meeting with PennDOT in September, we went through the comments, so we are knocking on the doorstep of resubmitting, and we'll certainly copy the township in your office.
Landscaping, uh, comment number seventeen, you did submit a revised landscaping plan. Uh, we've not had a full review of that yet, because the submission was late last week. However, I did notice that, um, the ordinance requires landscaping in all islands, uh, and you have several islands adjacent to the buildings where you have sidewalks, so you don't have landscaping. I'm not sure if you're going to request a waiver from that section.
Could you, I'm sorry, Gia. In our review of the ordinance, I couldn't find that specific section that, that discussed the, the need for, uh, trees in every island.
We can talk about it after this, but it's every, for every four spaces, there needs to be an island and it needs to be landscaped with a tree. I'm pretty sure, but we can.
Okay.
We can have a conversation after this, not a problem. Sewer planning models and other open high, I don't obviously, you're probably, I don't know if you started any of that process?
We have.
Okay. More for final plans, but developer's agreements and cost estimates are going to need to be submitted. Stormwater management. Again, I went through, comment, comment number twenty-two with water quality inlets. It still seems like there's some inlets missing, water quality devices, to ask you to review that again. Previous seminal talked about pipes and divertions adjacent to the railroad tracks redirecting runoff away from the parcel. We commented at the last time, I haven't commented again, I don't see any of that existing piping. So I'm not sure if it was a miscue on the last letter that you provided, or if you just haven't shown it. But if there's existing piping along that railroad set that's converting water in or out of the site, you definitely want those pipes identified. Still think there's some missing pipe profiles, and there's no utility crossings, and some slopes don't seem to meet the adequate pipe slope. Um, there's also some pipes with some very minimal cover over them, so just request to take another look at that. Item twenty-five in the letter, still can't correlate to your volumes with other tables provided in the report. Item twenty-seven, there's still discrepancies within stormwater systems between the calculations and the details of the plan. General comment thirty-three, I think we just got today, the East Penn Railroad agreement, so that probably is, is satisfied.
And that's just the cross, right?
It's just the cross, yeah. Item thirty-four under general comments, uh, crossing of the wetland, you'll need permitting for that. Uh, item number thirty-five, any retaining wall is greater than four feet high and require sign and sealed calculations.
I have a question about thirty-four, so I remember asking about bridging those wetland areas. Is that even a thought, or is it going to be, um, crossing right through?
The crossing with the walls works better, uh, because it's, it's such a shallow crossing to, to accomplish it than, than to try to bridge it. So we're, we're going with, uh, that, that approach, using, using the walls and, uh, just because of the limited height.
So no, you're just going to go right through, with the road?
No, no. Yeah, we're going to have pipes, they, it'll be retaining wall with pipes, but it won't be a bridge, a structure, structured bridge.
So you'll be impacting me, is what I'm saying. I was trying to bridge it, so you wouldn't impact me.
Yeah, there'll, there'll be that, that, a minimal impact that's allowable for the.
Oh, I know what's allowable, I was just trying to see maybe we could not impact you.
Item thirty-eight, uh, comments for allergic control, obviously, they, they have not, um, submitted their MPDS or really got too down and dirty with the EMS design, so we'll need all of that to be provided once they get to that point. Um, item forty, we have not received a review yet from the Union Fire Company, I believe that is ongoing. Item forty-one, it, it's my understanding, and I took a look at it again today, so you're not anticipating any truck traffic on, into or out of Graves Road?
Correct.
So you have a sign proposed in the site to prevent trucks from going out there, but there is no signage currently on Graves Road, um, prohibiting truck traffic that I'm aware of. So that will be.
There is.
There is. There's on the West Nottingham side, there is.
Yes.
There's not one right between the intersection and.
There, right, uh, what I'm, but as you head south of Graves Road, trucks are restricted in West Nottingham. But we're going to propose, propose additional signing to restrict trucks as well as some physical measures in terms of the design of the access to physically deter trucks from using Graves Road. Our, our proposal is to have all trucks access Baltimore Pike.
You're going to propose signage on the township road?
Township would allow.
Well, I mean, that, that's what I, that's where I was getting at. There's no signage on our, in our township that prohibits trucks.
So we can do that.
So if we're, if you're saying you're not going to use that for access, then the township needs to take some sort of action to provide signage or do a weight limit analysis on that road to limit truck traffic.
Well, signage is one thing, portion of another.
Uh, sewer authority approval, obviously, that's probably still not even, uh, close to being ready. Um, item forty-five, still asking you to take a look at backhaul requirements for, for PennDOT, for your details. Um, there's specific depth limitations there where you can use structural fill or stone, so we, we've done that from a lot of different developers, so I want to make sure it's clear on the plans. Traffic comments. Um, we've mentioned a little bit about improvements in West Nottingham and for other developments and signals and things like that, but our traffic engineer commented that, um, there's no real discussion of when that timing is going to be for those other developments compared to when your timing is going to be. And if, if your development's going to come first and those signals are not updated, so our traffic engineer is looking for additional information on what you might have for.
Yeah, so our study looks at it both ways. So the intersection of two seventy-two and Baltimore Pike, we actually analyzed the intersection without any improvements. So if it doesn't happen, we don't think that's the case. We think it is going to happen, we've met with West Nottingham, they are moving ahead with design, the project is moving forward. We all want to see the project move forward. So we've also prepared the study, assuming the improvements are in place, so we've done it both ways.
Okay. We'll, uh, we'll look at that and maybe we'll try and engage with West Nottingham to have some conversation about, about that. Item fifty was about the railroad, and, and like I said, we, we just got that plan and easement today, so we'll just confirm that's been taken care of. New comments, we were missing the sheet fifty-three from the set. Good comment four, it required to confirm from the stormwater report, uh, bed sizing and pipe information that's inputted into the routing. So if we can get some clarity on how the input is done into your program to make sure that what, what's getting into the program is what's actually shown on the plans. Item five, the detail has been added for office protection on the, uh, no office protection, but not for annual discharge protection. So any outlet structure, not just an orifice, requires discharge protection, non, uh, for childproof, non-podding track rail. Comment number eight, and, and I guess, I'm kind of surprised that the railroad said okay, but, um, we asked for widening in the area of railroad crossing to enable two-way traffic without any sort of conflict. It does seem like the driveway gets wide up towards Baltimore Pike, but then it gets pinched down at the railroad. Um, and with the big trucks coming in and there, and you have, kind of right at the bend, I don't have any consideration given to widening that area at all. And then the next round of new comments. Clarif-, you can talk a little bit about it tonight, but clarify on the, the hatching and line work that's been added to the plans, I'm putting that on the legend.
The condominium plan that.
Well, well, this red, I mean, now I, I mean, I kind of know, I, I knew, but you should have it on the plan anyway, that it's the buffer. Which leads into the next comment. You've shown a thirty-foot non-disturbance buffer, it's being approached by the roadway and retaining wall. The ordinance allows some disturbance at the township's discretion. It's not necessarily come formally and said, hey, I want to reduce that buffer. Um, and you're not allowed to disturb within the first ten feet, no matter what, even with the township's discretion, and you're doing that in some areas. So either you have to scale that back, or regardless, I think you need a waiver from that section, because you're disturbing it with your crosses.
Even though that'd be, a general permit would cover that, you're seeing this more.
It's all township ordinance. You have a couple stormwater basins that seem to appear, seem to exceed the dewatering time of seventy-two hours.
We'll, we'll check that again, they, they were all designed to, to not exceed seventy-two hours.
And that's the end of all of my most recent comments. Like I said, we did just get the railroad stuff today, so I'm going to fully review that, but.
Gia, because there's headwaters here, do they have to do anything more for what, more quality and, um, for the volume that comes off, how fast it comes off?
They, they have to meet just the township ordinance requirements for the water quality. And then with, because, um, they'll get an MPDS, we have to make sure they comply with all the requirements for that, but nothing, it's not that specific.
That's the thirty-three that we've interviewed for open issues. But you came here tonight looking for us to get preliminary approval. Is my understanding right, Matt?
That is correct. I mean, this letter is pretty typical in the stage that we're at of the project, like this is a bunch of clarification that I think I didn't think would be picked up on enough plan, uh, revision, to actually resubmit a whole new set of plans for a lot of this. And, and again, I'm stating in general, but again, I, I feel like we can comply with all of this.
What about the comments from the, um, Rochester County Planning Commission and the ORPC? Were they addressed?
I think some of them were similar, we have, and some of them were, were in general statements that they kind of said, and that's what I'm.
Both of which heavily encourage use of the railroads.
Yeah.
They did, I mean, there was obviously the actual regional planning commission comprehensive plan, which calls out this entire corridor as a commercial industrial area. It specifically calls out the need for more commercial industrial to offset the residential tax base.
One other thing that's universal among the six, well, at least six of the local advisory committees, is they're not putting a whole lot of faith in the traffic studies without knowing where the tenants are. That, that's one thing that's universal in repetition upon all six, the fire committees, especially not for the regional planning commission.
And the borough.
And the borough, well, the borough, the borough one is far. Exactly, well, the borough literally sent a, um, an elected official to the last board of supervisors meeting to express their concern.
She might have been here tonight to design the maintenance.
Right, but she, um, you know, they also, they also allocated funds, if I'm not mistaken, if I am correct, for their own engineering study, to study their own impact and what's been to their infrastructure.
I'd like a copy of that letter that I'll read in the correspondence agenda item.
I just want to make it clear that it exists. And the other question I have is, is your timing of your letter of extension. Um, the expiration of that falls between the next board of supervisors meeting and our planning commission, the next planning commission. So you, I mean, as you can ascertain from that, you are expecting us to make a decision on the preliminary plan tonight.
I mean, again, from what I just mentioned on the letter, we did feel that there was something, and to your point about the traffic, I think we're doing the best we can, and we can even make that a condition of a building permit in terms that the township gets correspondence, that the updated traffic study based on the actual user for that building permit is consistent with the traffic study that was submitted as part of the land development prior to issuing a building permit. To give you an extra level of comfort in addition to the post-occupancy study. Because again, we understand that, we don't know who the end user is, but we can say that you're not going to be able to issue a building permit until we know who it is, it's consistent with the study. And then we also want to know, once they're in, that what they told you they were going to use is, is consistent.
Yeah, and I'll just say, that is more protection than any development, any typical development would get through the municipal review process. I mean, most shopping centers are built, you don't know who every tenant is at the shopping center. I realize.
Like a Chick-fil-A, for example?
Chick-fil-A or grocery store, you don't know who the tenant is. I mean, it's not uncommon, most traffic studies are done based on general use. You know the type of use you want, you don't know who the tenant is. This is how, the main percent of the studies that we do, this is how they're prepared, which is why we do the best we can, we try to be conservative in our projections. We use a conservative worst-case estimate of traffic. Again, it doesn't serve us well to come in and tell you something that's going to be less than what we actually think it will be, that never works well.
Well, if that's the case, then why are you submitting a preliminary plan with the bare minimum, and then telling us last time that you're going to ask for more after the fact?
Well, that's not a traffic. I, I'm just talking about the traffic study, in terms of studies, but then what I'll say is what, what Matt has offered in terms of the, the monitoring and then the follow-up studies, that is not typical. So you'll have a, a role in the process, you know, like a belt and suspenders type of, uh, ability to monitor this thing. You know, you don't typically see with almost every land development. I, I, I would imagine you've seen other land development applications, but you probably haven't seen that problem of protection, uh, to be able to have that monitoring.
We, we have, but to be perfectly honest with you, we've never seen, I mean, I, at, at, at least of something of this magnitude, of this possible impact, and this possible, not just to us, but to our neighbors, you know, deeply concerned about that. And, um, you know, I've, I've got some things to say, you have to, and everybody else is going to, but I want you guys to let me know when you're done with the foot.
So, so what would make you guys feel good about the traffic study? I mean, you know, third parties, like it. That's not, that's not a thing. We have housing developments coming, guess what? There's going to be a lot of traffic.
Housing development is trying a little four-wheel vehicles.
They drive a lot, a lot more, but. But can, can I please finish my thought? Everybody else got a chance.
Let Joe finish, please.
So I don't, I, I don't think that. What's that? Uh, my name's Jake, yeah, a traffic engineer in a previous life. So I don't know what's going to make this board or you guys, what these guys can present to give you a warm, fuzzy feeling about the traffic. This gentleman's presented, an institute of traffic engineers, studies that have been done for decades to mirror what could happen.
What about Graves Road? You don't say nothing about Graves Road. There's four hundred and four cars per day on Graves Road, and you don't say anything about it.
Each one of those trucks is going to tie up four minutes each. Let's say you have a hundred and eighty trucks, right? And you do the math, that's twelve hours of additional tie-up time, if I did my math right. And that's only a hundred and eighty trucks.
Where are they getting tied up?
He's going to be stopping at one, he's going to be lost, he's going to be going fifteen miles an hour, come on now, you know the routine.
Maybe you should go on the corner of two seventy-two and old Baltimore Pike and sit there on that white house and watch the traffic.
I've, I've sat there, I've sat there.
You have no clue.
I have, I have.
Really?
A, a very good clue.
Can I ask one question?
Actually, no.
Have any consideration been to two seventy-two and Barnsley and Meteor Road? That is a dangerous intersection the way it is. And I'm not saying which side of this I'm on, but if we're going to talk about traffic, you need to address all, all places.
So my.
Trucks coming out of, I'm not, I, you asked for your time, give me two.
I did, but it is my time, and your time.
You said okay to me. All I'm saying is, trucks coming out of.
No, no!
Round one, round ninety-five.
We wanna hear public comment, you just have to let Jake say what he wants to say as well.
So, I guess, I'm, and, and I'm not debating that, that's, it's a lot of traffic, I'm just saying, what is, what study can be done, that's gonna make the, the board, or anybody, feel good?
There, there are appropriate places for things, and there are inappropriate places for things, and this is not an appropriate place for this to take place.
But it's been zoned this way for, since two thousand-
It, it's, okay, it's just, I, I was sworn to act in the best interest of the residents of East Nottingham Township.
Thank you.
This is not in the best interest of your residents of East Nottingham Township.
And we're also sworn to uphold the ordinance of-
No, the Board of Supervisors is, we are not, we give advice to the Board of Supervisors. The Board of Supervisors bears the legal- The Board of Supervisors is legally out with you, we're not, we just give advice, based on what these people want. That's the way I'm looking.
Who wants you all going?
Yeah?
Me?
No!
You know, in Jake's defense, he's just trying to do his job here as well, I mean, that's not really fair.
No, I'm, I'm just, don't worry about it.
Sounds not fair. We're all trying to do the best we can up here.
Our job is to bring up all the questions, to see what, what can be done, because this isn't the only development coming. And some of the same questions that you're asking here, although that may, they may be smaller, are still a big impact to the, to the development of this township. So there's, there's gotta be open discussions about traffic, and what's gonna make it, uh, what, what they, what the developers and the people that come in here, whether it be a farmer or anybody else that wants to do anything, because I've been on the side on the farm things, where it hasn't gone my way either, that there's a set of rules to follow, and we're following the rules. And, and that's, that's a consensus I'm trying to get to, is-
Jake, wouldn't you agree, I'll not only interrupt you if you don't, but I have a question for you. Wouldn't one of the things, when we talk about rules, we talk about consistency, okay, and I haven't been on this table as long as you have, but I've sat before developments that have come in here, and we've said unequivocally, that we do not change our ordinance to accommodate developers. We've said that, and we've had several who walked out of that door unhappy, because we've said that, but we stood by it, we do not change our ordinance to accommodate developers. Now, how do we, how do we answer to that, when that developer, we, we've sent out that door unhappy, and they, and they say that, and we allow, we allow these changes to take place to accommodate the developer?
But, but we didn't do that, we wrote, we, we spent a year rewriting an ordinance that doesn't have that in.
Doesn't have that.
Doesn't have the height, it has a thirty-five foot height in it, like, we didn't change it.
Right, that was what people wanted, they didn't want to change.
So, so it's not changed, they, they can't legally build it right now.
Yeah, they can't, thirty-five.
They can build it at thirty-five, but that, that's what they can build with the ordinance.
That's what the- If I had built it at thirty-five, but then after the fact, they can apply, modify that, which is what they can't do.
And you said you want them to follow the rules.
The, the rules is they go to a zoning area. That's the rules that are in place, just like when people wanna build about thirty-five foot on their house, they get, or they want six chickens instead of two chickens, they pay the thousand dollars and they go to the zoning. That's the rules that are in place.
The thing is, it, the thing is though, Jake, it, it is a bait and switch, this is what we're gonna come with, but we really have no intention of building that, but we are gonna have to go higher.
So how, how do you-
Even if they go through the process correctly, this is the open door to that process, and so, in all due conscience, I could honestly not vote in support, or ask the board to do that, because I know they have no intention of doing that.
Can I just comment on that real quick? This plan will not change, regardless of the height, so I, I don't understand, like, what, what, what were you reviewing?
That's even worse, 'cause if you get height, then that's, that's-
But I'm just saying, you're saying the plan's gonna change, the, the plan does not change regardless.
The height change makes a big difference.
The height change will-
Because I mean, you even said yourself, that if I only have to go sixty feet, I'll go for hardship and get sixty feet, that's not how hardship works.
No, no, so I was saying, if there's a particular company that had a, a use, it would come in front of the township and say, going into zoning here, or here's our use, does this comply with your ordinance? No, it doesn't, and going through that process of putting on a zoning hearing testimony, and then ultimately, it'll be at the discretion of the zoning hearing board to make, make that determination, but we'd only be bringing forth the, you could say, we can't build it to that height. Uh, and again, unless we found a user that said we're okay with thirty-five, which we would then, you know, either sell the building, or, you know, figure out a long-term lease, uh, if it went and made sense. Which would then, you know, correspond to more of a bathing-type development, like you wouldn't do the whole thing, short of what you needed soil to be able to kinda flop from a, you know, kinda a cut, fill analysis.
And I think what we all see is, like, we look at what you've said, and our ordinance is thirty-five feet, and I feel like I'm beating a dead horse with this, but everybody's listening to what you say, and you said you wanna increase that height.
I'm saying it's more marketable than-
It's more marketable.
Yeah, correct, so we would have a wider net of companies that would look at this site, if it was higher than thirty-five feet, so we're very limited as to who we're going after, and if we found somebody that wanted higher, we would come back and try to-
Right, but our ordinance is thirty-five feet, and I knew you wanna try and get a variance, and then if the variance doesn't go through, then you would try for hardship.
Uh, that is, the, the zoning hearing board is the variance, essentially, proving hardship is that process, right.
Um, I'm gonna read a motion, and I'm gonna ask you guys for complete silence, because when we read motions, the wording is very critical, that the microphones pick it up, you guys hear it clearly, and our secretaries hear it. So, I'm gonna ask for complete silence. Mr. Chairman, as you're aware, the last letter of extension from the developer ends on a date that includes the next Board of Supervisors meeting, but occurs before the next planning commission meeting. One should infer by that date selection that the decision is, is expected tonight, therefore, I'd like to make a motion. There have been several significant concerns of the, of the residents of East Nottingham Township, our neighbors in the borough, and other surrounding municipalities. We are aware of at least six local advisory committees that have expressed serious concern. This includes East Nottingham Township, us, West Nottingham Township Planning Commission, the Oxford Borough Planning Commission, the Oxford Borough Council, the Oxford Regional Planning Committee, the Chester Planning Committee. One significant, universal concern is traffic impact, and there have been various traffic studies conducted by several parties, that all claim insufficient information and the lack of candor regarding the other tenants that will occupy the structures in question. Our neighboring municipality, the borough of Oxford, is such, so concerned, that they have allocated funds to consult an engineer, and have graciously designated an elected council member to appear in person before the Board of Supervisors yesterday, to convey the traffic study concerns. In addition, a multitude of engineering and extremely important environmental concerns still remain unresolved. Given my concerns identi, I just identified, I move to forward this recommendation that East Nottingham Township Board of Supervisors not approve this plan for the Hurstmont project. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion?
The discussion is, you mean, tonight forever?
They came here tonight-
They came here tonight for, for a preliminary plan for a whole-
You're talking for a preliminary plan?
Yeah.
Tonight, tonight.
But then come back next month, and more, whatever somebody's gonna resolve. Right? I'm gonna, they, they came here asking for preliminary plan approval.
Tonight.
And I'm making a motion to decline, to advise the Board of Supervisors not to approve this plan.
I have a second, submit a motion.
Do you need a statement to not approve the plan?
Yes, a statement to justify it, go it anyway. We're making a, we're, we're making a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors, on what our opinion is, and how they should, or yard.
And I think this situation warrants any, no comment you have, then just say yes or no.
Well, I, I will say, I, I do think there's outstanding issues that still need to be resolved with the letter, and some of these open questions and everything, also. Go on record for that.
Not the same thing, some of these things need to be resolved. So it's two yes votes.
Out of sixty-three items, there's thirty that are still open, and we have three from the latest reg, uh, vision that have no answers at all.
Would you be looking for us to respond to the letter, or actually update the plans, because a lot of these things, as I said, Javon, are, are kind of, will comply.
We, we don't, we don't have-
Kinda plan-related, but there's something to be addressed.
According to the letter of extension, we don't have another buyer of this apple as a plan.
Correct.
So we have to-
You have to take action tonight.
We have to take action.
Or we could extend another month, if that's what you're trying-
Yeah, we're not doing month-to-month-to-month.
It's been since March, and that's what I mean, like, as far as, like, if you'd like us to go back and address these, we're happy to do so.
You showed us another plan in September or October, and that went off the table, so it, you might say it's been since March, but it's been somewhat of a looming target. And these other issues that we brought up, they, they do require spring and summer, at least some of the issues I care about, and the wetland delineation, it's gonna take time. This month-to-month stuff is ridiculous. So you're forcing our hand? So my, mine is approval of the, of what Joe said.
So I guess if you would have requested that prior, before the vote, you would have, you know, if you'd like us to file another extension for sixty days, or nine, like, whatever the request might be, I just, we, we figured that this would be, obviously, something that we, we will comply with all of these, I don't see anything in here that we can't comply with, so, again, I, I just don't know if it's a total plan resubmission.
For me, and I've said this already twice, so I'll say it one more time, your intention is not to build this, your intention is to build higher, and I, and it is a bait and switch, and I cannot support that.
I agree with Eileen, like, I feel like there's a little bit of, maybe a little bit, a little bit more of distrust, because I feel like there's been things that you've brought to our attention, and you've changed, I mean, there, there was even a, an extension through January, correct?
There is an extension through January.
Different plan.
What do you mean? Oh, no, so that, that was a prior, that was a prior from maybe ten years ago.
Correct.
Five years ago.
And that almost felt like it was forcing a deemed approval.
I think that was for just a general subdivision, I don't think that actually had a land development plan.
Okay, because then we extended thirty days, once we kinda-
If there were two separate, like, it's a whole different engineer, and that's personal, so not-
And I, I mean, I'm in agreement with Joe as well, I mean, the letter, there's so many things outstanding on the, the Standback Letter that, on agreeing with, with Joe's motion.
Understood.
Everybody, I know I got part of the plan, you're gonna say, yeah, you're net.
Yeah, I'm having an no vote as well, I mean, is plan technically complies to our zoning salary codes, I'm not permitted to reject the plan on that basis. It allows for the buy rate plan that has been submitted and we're reviewing, not much more I can do about that on that basis, however, as a planning commission member and its chair, I do have the solemn duty and obligation to assess these plans for much more than chapter and verse of the code. Uh, planning commissions are part of looking at the bigger picture, how the township will be impacted in the long term, and to make a determination if this development is in the best interest of the health, safety, and welfare of the residents of this township. This development clearly does not meet that criteria, is not in the township's best interest, in my opinion. This development has a serious impact on traffic, roads, light, noise, stormwater runoff, emergency services, and the environment. This will not only affect our township, but adjoining municipalities such as West Nottingham and Oxford Borough, both of whom have voiced these same concerns. The Chester County Planning Commission and the Oxford Area Regional Planning Commission also shares these same concerns in the review. Uh, to add, one year ago, the Oxford Area Regional Planning Commission distributed a mini survey, asking respondents to identify the top three topics and issues that they thought would impact the Oxford region in the next ten years. The top three answers were, traffic congestion was number three, number two was preservation of rural character, and number one was a natural resource protect, protection. I, I think approximately forty percent of these respondents were East Nottingham Township residents. We'd be foolish not to listen to these concerns, as this development checks those three boxes. Uh, this plan and process have quite clearly shown us, looking ahead, has quite clearly shown us the vulnerabilities exist in our current codes for the I-one district. Because of this development, and looking ahead, the planning commission did draft a new I-one ordinance, that is currently in the hands of the Board of Supervisors and a township solicitor to review and adopt. While it cannot be adopted to change the rules for this development, it can be for future developments like this when they come up. Regardless of how this particular development pans out, it is critical for the future of our township, that the planning commission's current revised I-one ordinance be adopted quickly by the Board of Supervisors, in order to protect the interests of our township and its citizens for the future. It is ultimately up to the Board of Supervisors and our solicitor to decide the fate of this project, then the fate of our updated I-one ordinance. I would hope they would listen to my opinion, and the opinions of my other fellow PC members and residents. As an aside, I'd also like to urge township residents to research PA House Bill nineteen sixty, which would put, put any proposed warehouse to a public referendum vote in that municipality. You might wanna contact your state reps and state senators on that. How, PA House Bill nineteen sixty, which would put any proposed warehouse to a public referendum vote in that municipality. Uh, it is still under consideration, I need to talk- You need to talk to your rep- You need to talk to your representative and senator. Yeah. There's something of interest, everyone should know, that's all I have to say.
Ready for any further comments? Want any official votes, ladies and gentlemen?
Can we read it one more time for everybody?
My, my motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman-
Are we gonna be voting on this, Mark?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, as you're aware, the letter, the last letter of extension from the developer ends on a date that includes the next Board of Supervisors meeting, but occurs before the next planning commission meeting. One should infer by that date that the decision is expected tonight, therefore, I would like to make a motion. There have been significant concerns of the residents of East Nottingham Township, our neighbors in the borough of Oxford, and other surrounding municipalities. We are aware of at least six local advisory committees that have expressed serious concerns, and includes, East Nottingham Township Planning Commission, that's us, the West Nottingham Planning Commission, the Oxford Borough Planning Commission, the Oxford Borough Councils, the Oxford Regional Planning Committee, and the Chester County Planning Committee. One significant, universal concern is traffic impact. There have been various traffic studies conducted by several parties, that all claim insufficient information due to the lack of candor regarding the other ten, or, regarding the other tenants that will occupy the structures in question. Our neighboring municipality, the borough of Oxford, is so concerned, that they have allocated funds to consult an engineer, and have graciously designated an elected council member to appear in person before the Board of Supervisors to convey the traffic study concerns. In addition, a multitude of engineering and extremely important environmental concerns still remain unresolved. Given the many conditions identified, I move to forward the recommendation that East Nottingham Board of Supervisors not approve this plan for the Hurstmont project.
So, so a yes vote is to not approve the project?
A yes vote is to recommend that the East Nottingham Board of Supervisors not approve the project.
The plans now, not the project, the plans.
The plan for the Hurstmont.
Blue.
Yes.
Blue.
Right. The motion was made and seconded, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There you go, is there any vote?
I have another motion, so I, I have another motion, so I'm asking you for the same courtesy that you showed me before, I appreciate it. Based on the concerns of the residents of East Nottingham Township, and the concerns of neighbors in the borough of Oxford, these six separate advisory committees, unresolved serious environmental issues, the lack of confidence in provided traffic studies- unresolved serious environmental issues, the lack of confidence in provided traffic studies, and strongly articulated public opinions, I move to forward this recommendation from the East Nottingham Planning Commission that the, that the East Nottingham Board of Supervisors not create, modify, or amend any industrial zoning ordinance that allows a change in maximum height from the existing thirty-five-foot limit in any direct or indirect manner through, or through conditional use or any other means. We further recommend that all efforts be made to, to revisit the draft ordinance we submitted earlier this year.
Second.
Favor?
All who's in favor?
Read again.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a.
Read the motion, though.
Based on the concerns of the residents of East Nottingham Township and the concerns of the neighbors in the borough of Oxford, at least six, and six separate advisory committees, unresolved serious environmental issues, lack of confidence in provided traffic studies, and strongly articulated public opinion, I move to forward this recommendation from the East Nottingham Planning Commission that the East Nottingham Township Board of Supervisors not create, modify, or amend any industrial zoning ordinance that allows a change in maximum height from the existing thirty-five feet in any direct, indirect, or indirect manner, or through conditional use or any other means. We further recommend that all efforts be made to revisit the draft ordinance that we submitted earlier this year. So this is a recommendation to the board of supervisors that they do not modify the existing ordinance to accommodate heights. It's just a recommendation to the board of supervisors. We don't make the rules, we just make recommendations.
Second motion. All who's in favor of Joe's motion?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm stinging.
I'm a no.
I'll go away and want it, yeah. Aye.
Motion carries. Continue on with the agenda. For the planning commission, there's subdivisions in process, subdivisions of conditional program approval. Do you want to have any questions on these? Moving on to all the business. Uh, our sound ordinance review, the Tria's story review.
Yeah, I'll have that for your January, for your January.
I, I want to say so.
One, one point of order. You guys still.
Wait a minute.
While you're, but before you leave, you do have, there is, there is time at the end of, for recognition of, for recognition of visitors.
Yeah, you guys have every right.
Okay, so, we have to go through our business, and then.
Won't take long.
Which won't take long, and then there's a recognition of visitors at the end.
But the developer left, so, you know, this kind of opportunity. Oh, they're over in the corner. Oh, I didn't see, I didn't see. Don't go anywhere.
Okay, so Gia will do the review next month. Uh, new business, the official map, this is our news.
Oh, um, I, we got approval to, um, prepare an official map for the township that lays out all the, um, different zoning areas and the plans for the future for the township. I just got, uh, approval from the board at their last meeting, so I'm not gonna do this alone. Maybe you can have a small subcommittee and, um, and, and contact a, a third party that would help, um, prepare that map, and then it would be officially approved by the board of supervisors, and it's the first step for, like, our township comprehensive plan and what we want, how we want to see it grow.
We'll also identify vulnerable properties and properties that we might want to contend, protect in the future.
Yeah.
So as we don't go through this again.
Open space, yeah. Yeah. And then we also, at the Oxford Regional Planning Commission, a lot of the conversation was around this particular development and the traffic issues. I mean, I would say seventy-five percent of the conversation, Joe, was focused on, on, you were on the call, was focused on. Oxford Regional Planning Commission is made up of, uh, East Township, West Nottingham, East Nottingham, the borough, and, uh, lower and upper Oxford.
And El.
I said, I said El.
Oh, you said El first.
Um, anyway, and so, uh, you know, we talk about regional planning, and, and this has been on their, um, radar for quite some time. So that was the majority of, of the call there. I'm go, I will give every time that there is a, um, a meeting, I, I'll give a, a better summary. You know, that's, uh, all the different issues that we have addressed. But I did ask for this to be on the agenda, just so you can know what's going on in and around the township, planning-wise.
All right, moving on to correspondence. Uh, we did receive a letter from the Oxford Borough. They commissioned a traffic study concerning the Hurs' property. That letter states, as requested, we reviewed the following prepared by Hala Engineering regarding the reference submission. They go on to describe the plans that were submitted. I'm not gonna go read all that. A lot more mumbo jumbo locating property. I'm not gonna read that chapter and verse, at least everyone times. Uh, we offer the following traffic comments. One, additional information should be provided to justify the use of ITC land code one fifty-five. Thank you, Joe. Uh, for estimating trips for proposed use. Specific data from the proposed end user's other facilities should be provided to justify the proposed trips, along with information on the type of materials that will be stored, shipped from this development. Uh, besides the size of the development, there should be, there is a potential to generate significantly more traffic, notably truck, truck traffic, than estimates provided in the study. Two, the traffic study includes a sum of all trucks will access the site to and from the south to avoid traveling through Oxford Borough. The applicant should address how truck traffic will be restricted from traveling through Oxford Borough. Should you have any further questions, please contact the underside and Canoni Associates, uh, the borough engineer and Canoni Associates, and that one talks from the borough. Uh, we also received a letter from the Chester County Planning Commishal, Commission for the Duglil Farm. I'm not gonna read that here. This is for the planning commission members to read, and it's something that was on last month's agenda, and I will read it. Uh, this morning, or earlier today, we got a letter from Ed Herr and Truie Gundin of Hurs'. East Nottingham Township and area residents, we appreciate all concerns. They're legitimate, and we too appreciate the rural coun- country environment where we live, work, and play. When we bought the property, we thought we would use it to expand the spray irrigation system that we have for potato chip manufacturing, and our dad and Mr. Shepherd were good friends. Later we learned that the land was not good for spray irrigation. Several years passed, and we got to the point where we had no reason to hold on to the property. When we sell a property that is owned industrially, we feel that is our responsibility to try our best to sell it to a reputable buyer that is good for the community. By that, we mean we believe our business is a blessing to the community, and that it helps relieve the burden for the residents, helps the school system, provides jobs, and gives back to the community nonprofits, that we are good neighbors. We have said no to other potential buyers of this land because we thought that their ideas for how to use the land were not ideal. We feel that the current potential buyer cares about their reputation, their reputation too, and wants to bring the best possible use and management of this piece of property relative to how it's zoomed. Further, now the township will decide if this is a good use of the property, considering all above. We assume their division, their, their decision will be a wise one, not based on the consideration for Hurs', but based on what is best use, what is the best use for the zoning for the township, knowing that at some point, the property will be sold. Thank you, and God bless you all for this great community. Ed Herr, Truie Gundin. Anything further from the planning commission members? Great, uh, next slide is where are the two listeners? This is your time to speak. Uh, name and where you're from?
Yeah, I'm Ed Brown from East Nottingham. I want to thank all you all. Um, if you're up for Hurs', I would just like to say, please ask Mr. Herr in regard to selling property for something like this, that he have grace on the people that live around here. He could show mercy like Jesus Christ, of which he celebrates by lighting up Nottingham, a very positive thing. This will put a black mark on everything they've done since they built that factory in nineteen fifty-two. Please ask him to consider that. Please. I know you guys do development. I'm not here to demonize you in any way. This is just what you do. But what's going on in our township, this will make such a huge impact on all of us. And I just, uh, I just ask you convey that to Ed Herr. He mentioned God in his letter he sent. Ask him to search his heart for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jennifer Brown. I've lived in East Nottingham Township for thirty years. And I just wanna, um, you know, thank the planning commission for their time, and, and I don't know why they want to destroy the village of Nottingham with two thousand trucks a day at them, at that red light. And then, I can't even imagine the traffic at the one entrance at Baltimore Pike. Is there a red light plan? Right there at Baltimore Pike and the entrance? Because trucks will idle there a long time trying to get out. Maybe not at midnight. Maybe not at midnight while I'm trying to sleep, and they're idle, they won't be idling that long. But certainly, the pollution is gonna be terrible. Just terrible. And the lighting pollution? I mean, a stupid, uh, storage box center, light shines in my house all the time. I mean, what kind of, is that reading code? I don't know. I don't even know what township it's in, but it's so annoying. It's so bright. And I can't even believe that that lighting isn't, wouldn't be on twenty-four-seven, destroying everything in the area, destroying my monarch butterfly raising every year. Um, also, allowing that at the head of the drainage into the northeast creek that heads into the Chesapeake Bay, is that really good? Is there a drainage basin right there for, for, to catch all that pollution? I'm not sure. I don't see it on the map. And I, I believe there's no, no fire for this warehouse. It's twenty minutes from I- ninety-five. How is it close to I- ninety-five for moving goods? I mean, all the traffic blocks go left, right? Because the borough's gonna stop it from going right, then through Oxford. So all two thousand trucks a day are gonna make a left down Baltimore Pike to the intersection at Hurs', destroy the village. That light's not that great, anyway, is it? They're not gonna expand the road? That's what they said? Oh, they don't know the buyer, they don't know the hood, they'll ask for special hardship for everything. Everything's on their side. But i- it's very disturbing. Um, and there is some type of eagles nest on that property, isn't there? I see the eagles in the trees. I have pictures of them from my house across the road there, at the wooded area. I don't know where the nest is, but there was a guy at the board of supervisors, he said, there's an eagles nest on that property.
The nest there will come back every year.
And I see the eagles every year. On the trees, hunting. That's not mentioned. Bob turtles are. I don't know. About bob turtles, I don't care. Eagles, I care about. Seems like an American pet, that item. But the light, the industrial light, now that that one tiny section of land being, being zoned industrial in a residential area, and my zoning gets changed to seed one without my permission, just, just because I changed, what, two thousand eight with everybody else's? That's ridiculous. It wasn't seed one when I bought it thirty years ago. Nobody asked me. Oh, they did ask me about my neighbor's property though, didn't they? About the variance, hey, they wanted, but nobody asked me about this building height variance that this developer will probably ask for. So I get a certified letter from somebody who's telling me to come and try to fight it, or it will just be like a little hardship thing that just goes. Either way, I would tell everybody here, it's not over. It's just temporarily paused, and you probably need to attend more meetings. Thank you.
Oh, sir.
Hi, dear wife, East Nottingham Township. Uh, I just want everybody to, just want to reiterate that this is recommendations. They're going to recommend this. That doesn't mean that your commissioners aren't going to ignore it. When is the next commissioner meeting?
The supervisor. Board of supervisors is the sixth of January.
January sixth, seven o'clock. We were there. Yeah, but we need to be there again. We need to be there again, because we need to show up and we need to say to them, this recommend, these recommendations, you need to take them to heart. You need to listen to what we're saying to you. They're gonna develop this land, but they can develop it with not such an impact on us. So we all need to show up. Thank you.
You know, I would just say that it would be great if we had this many people at every planning commission meeting, because there's developments coming in. There'll be a thousand more people here pretty soon. So it would be great if you showed up when it's not in your backyard, but I am so grateful you're here tonight, but still, you know, the last Thursday, the last Monday of every month.
Well, we did hear that's why this is going through, because we didn't. But you guys are, are elected to protect the residents, so that we don't have to fend up.
Wait a minute, this young man has been waiting.
Go ahead, go ahead. Just, uh, my name's James Bryce of the East Nottingham, and I know emotions run high in situations like this. I've actually, my industry. I, I live here as well, and I know emotions run high. Um, I feel a certain way about this as well, but, um, I've been on the other side as well with my industry that I'm in. But one thing I wanted to ask is, uh, do you know, is any of that roofing been proposed at Greenwood or? You haven't got that. Yeah, I've got, I've got it, oh, yeah. Depending on the users, that's okay. Uh, one thing, one thing I just wanted to address is, like, the warehousing's up twenty-seven percent since COVID, so nobody online shopping. Because it was just a, a study released back in July of this year about the impact of large warehouses on neighboring communities, so. It wasn't great news, but I have the name of the, the place, or the study, if anybody wants it, so they can read up on it. It just showed that neighboring communities experienced twenty percent more nitrogen dioxide, which also showed eight times the rate of asthma in children, uh, and some other things. I mean, it goes pretty extensive. It was funded by, let me see here, European space agency, Federal Highway Administration funding from NASA. They used satellites to pick up on some of the, the pollution, so. It was a pretty good article. They just did it because of the expansion of so many warehouses, so. This is all new. This is new. Again, we kind of, we, we slept, we don't come to the meeting. Uh, but for the future, I'd like to hear that, what, some of the things that we're recommending for the future, so.
It's a lot easier to make the decision if you're.
Yeah, yeah, and I think as a community, situations like this bring people together.
You know, do me a favor and submit that link, because if we put it in the minutes and people actually read the minutes, then maybe they'll get that link that way.
I will. I actually have a written down here.
Yeah, just submit it. I'm just gonna take it. I won't read the rest. Yeah, you can go though, if you'd like to.
No birds, no birds. Uh, my name is Pat Cornabel. I live in East Nottingham Township. I am the chairman of the Local Republican Committee. I've been following this issue for quite a while now, since probably over a year. I've been before this board before. You know, I've heard a lot of input about this stuff. It, it, it kind of disturbed me to hear that we don't know who this tenant is. It's, I'm not the smartest guy in the world, but there ain't no way that you're gonna build something like that and you don't have a tenant. There's no way you can make me believe. So I did some research, and I looked up this company who's one of the two people that have approached you guys. You might, might not want to say the name of the company, but I will. CS five, CS three logistics. They are a perishable grocery warehousing distributor. Um, they're a pretty, a, a large company. They got a lot of money. You know, the old saying, follow the money. You want to know what's going on? Follow the money. So I started following the money. I started looking to see what's going on here. Um, these people had a warehouse up in terrific township a couple of years ago, three or four years ago. They pulled the same bait and switch up there. Same exact, the same MO. It's like watching the same, uh, uh, Bandit where it repeated something. They got in there, they said they were gonna do this, they did the complete opposite. It got to the point where the township, the township residents had to file a lawsuit, had to come up with the money, file a lawsuit, and get these people evicted out of that property. Now, you're saying that you can do that with a tenant if they don't follow the rules. Well, the people in terrific township had to come up with the money. The, the taxpayers had to come up with the money to get that done. And I just see that happen here again. So, you know, the old saying, follow the money, you know? It's, you just have to see, you have to do a little research, and you're looking, who's gonna benefit from this the most? Well, there's a realtor that's involved in this, okay? He's the realtor for the buyer, and he's the realtor for the seller. Okay, this is an eight-point-two million. This is an eight-point-two million dollar sale. Do the math. Follow the money. Four percent for the buyer, the buying agent, four percent for the selling agent. Figure out that number. How much money that guy's gonna make. I'm not gonna mention his name. I'm not gonna do that to him. But look into that. That's three quarters of, that's three quarters of a million dollars. That's a lot of money. So, you know, it's in the best interest, for a real estate agent, for a couple of people that are friends with that real estate agent, you know, the guy's been around for a while, and this is not a good thing. And I wanna give kudos to this planning commission here for having the guts to stand up and say no. Now again, like we said, this is merely just a recommendation that these people are making here. You know, they serve at the pleasure of the board supervisors. So they could go to the supervisors' meeting on January sixth, you said, and the board of supervisors could tell them. So that's, that's a very real thing that could happen. So, you know, as many people are here, bring another person at that meeting. Pack this room so there's people outside, because these, there's some supervisors on that board that really wanna push this thing through. And unless we stand up and fight it, it's gonna happen. I mean, it's zoned industrial. They're gonna build something there. And that second motion he made is critical. That's critical. If they don't change that ordinance, because if they don't change that ordinance and they do absolutely nothing, these guys are gonna walk away. Guaranteed. So think about it. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Charles Wood, a lifelong resident of this area. I commend the five of you, and as a fourth of you, to listen to the people. And I condemn the two that didn't have the guts to stand up to the decision. There's a big difference, just to educate you a little bit, sir. Big difference between trucks and chickens. I've said, I've said before, many times, I'm just a dumbass truck driver. But don't insult my integrity or my intelligence. And to hear a felonious traffic report like that gentleman presented tonight is an insult to everybody in this room. If you don't think the impact of class eight tractor and trailers, eighty thousand pound weight limit on Baltimore Pike, that intersection at two seventy-two and Old Baltimore Pike gets kind of ridiculous as it is now to make the turn. And I know what I'm talking about with over eight million miles accident free. So don't insult my intelligence with that kind of nonsense. And as a resident of the borough, the borough has spoke very clearly, as you acknowledged, Mark, and the impact, to say that the bulk of the influx is gonna come in off of Old Baltimore Pike, two seventy-two and Old Baltimore Pike. How about the guys coming north on Route one get off at ten, because they're not gonna go to Nottingham and go past it and circle back around? Their GPS wouldn't even tell them to get there. And incidentally, those coming up two seventy-two will make a left there at Jim's Market because their GPS tell, and go another mile and a quarter and turn right on Graves Road to access, it's the closest route. That's truck driver mentality. So again, I commend you, I thank you, I hope and pray that the supervisors hear the people also. Because three quarters of a million dollars can grease a lot of pockets, and that's nonsense. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I got one.
I would make a comment with, um, city day, East Nottingham Township. And the gentleman who said about, we should be excited that it's a building, you know? That impacting the school area, but your truck traffic will impact the school area. And there are kids, and there are buses that go up and down Old Baltimore Pike, two seventy-two, and the surrounding area. Those kids need to be concerned.
My name's Dave Hashcheck. I live on Hopewell Road. I've been here about forty years. This is my wife, Vicki. A lot of consideration of traffic has been talked about tonight, but none of it was mentioning the Glenroy area where the, you have like a merge or die situation there already when you're coming southbound on two seventy-two. You either turn or you're gonna get smashed. Now, without those trucks being able to have a turn lane there, which would stack them up in uphill, uh, southbound direction and wait their turn, they're gonna surge out in front of people that are coming fifty and sixty miles an hour northbound, and they're gonna take Forge Road to this location in front of the posthouse. And, and, and the other way, they'll go south on Old Baltimore Pike, they'll turn north on Forge, and west will go Hopewell and do the same thing. How far out does the traffic study go? Because the impact of the traffic reaches way beyond what they discussed here tonight. And that's all, that's what we, uh, it's just like...
We already have a huge impact of traffic.
The, the, not in my backyard is everybody's backyard. Like, I'm two and a half miles out from that, and it's gonna definitely, we're on the Nottingham bypass already. No one's gonna wanna drive a truck southbound to a red light in front of the Wawa, CBS. Everything else is there already, and want to wait in that kind of traffic when they can just hook a, a left onto Hopewell Road and a right onto Forge. And there's, uh, residential communities being built there and traffic from that already. And does the study for this, um, consider the widening and the turning lanes that would be, that would be needed to, to, to sell, to sell? And if it, and if it doesn't, then it, then it would be someone hurt or, uh, you know, there's cows, there's farms, there's people, lots of others. When, when would, when, when would the, uh, when would the, uh, the, the reason to consider it happen? That's all. That, that's just my comment. Just, it goes way out beyond, right, following those stats.
My name is Cora Sisaray, and I've been here for sixty-eight years. So I would tell you about the traffic on two seventy-two when there's an accident. Unfortunately, a lot of times it is not blocked off to direct traffic. You have trucks and trailers, and no fault of the fire company or the fire police. You have tractors and trailers going across bridges that don't have, have a weight limit. You have the turns, you have the, the small roads. These roads are not built for trucker and trailers. We drive a forty-foot motorhome and we can't get through some of these roads. And you expect all the traffic to do this? Do you know how many times two seventy-two has been blocked because of accidents? And I lived on that quarter where that weight house is on Baltimore Pike, two seventy-two. So your traffic studies really are only studies. It's, they're not true.
Thank you.
My name's Carol Plank, East Nottingham. We moved here three years ago. We have a neighborland, and we put up a garage, a second floor in the garage, and, uh, we had to come off, foot off our property wherever each street was footed, we went up from the second floor. So we're ten feet off our property line on one side. And the neighbor has a, and the other side has a row of trees, he had them three feet off his property. There were trees that he used, three feet on, on our property side, which looks like our apartment side and the side of the trees. That makes no sense to me, but this, this makes sense?
It does make sense.
Like, it doesn't. We're all, we're all scrutinized. We, the people, are totally scrutinized. That guy came into the super, you saw him last week come into the super bus? He was putting a house on a four-acre lot in the garage, and they just about laughed him out of the room. It was a disgrace. Did you guys see that?
Yeah.
That was terrible. I mean, that's us. That's us. That's what they're doing to us. This is what they're doing to us. January sixth, we gotta be there. Isn't that fine when they came today? Disgrace. Disgrace. This is the question. Are we all still here?
Um, my name's Ronnie Lutz, East Nottingham Township. I've lived in the township for nineteen years now. And one of those big elephants in the room is nobody is direct, has any conversation about the impact on our Amish neighbors. Our Amish neighbors are already impacted by all the developments coming in. People from busy counties come here, don't have the patience. They're not gonna be able to dodge those trucks. And it's, and, and what, you know, the other thing that's not being addressed is, what is this gonna do to the home values in the immediate area? I don't wanna hear, oh, one point five million for the school. Yeah, no. It's, 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 it's not, it's not the solution. We're not looking for money. I'm sure that you've already met the ones that are, but we're not. We wanna maintain the integrity of the community. We want the community to grow, but it needs to grow reasonably. And for you to have the nerve to mention an eighty-five-foot barn or a silo in this rural community compared to that monstrosity, shame on you.
I just have one more thing. Does everybody know that on this week, there's a thirteen-point-nine percent tax increase on the floor of the commissioners meeting in West Chester this week, from Chester County?
Ten AM, Wednesday morning. Ten AM, Wednesday morning.
I sincerely wanna thank everybody for coming out, and I know it's a hundred-on-one, okay? But I've been at dozen meetings with these folks, and I haven't seen anybody here to ask the questions that you have. And, oh, again, and I try to ask and answer as many questions as I could, so I just wanna give you guys... There's, I know, again, just give me a little bit of like, I'm trying to get as much of this all at once and try to address it. But we've been coming to these meetings for two years, just kind of working through it. So again, just bear with me, a lot of this stuff that you guys are bringing up.
Secrecy, no transparency. The community doesn't know.
I mean, ask for them to put it on the agenda so that they will start putting posts up on properties so that people know what they're starting to do. And it did not get put, put on December's agenda. So when we go to January sixth, we need to tell them that that's what we want. Because how are we supposed to know that they plan on doing this stuff if, if there's nothing telling us this?
Yeah, it's like the realtor that objects to all the meetings that have those designs.
A long night. Anyone else like to speak?
I just, one more thing I would like to say. I, um, I was at the meeting last week with the board of supervisors. And, um, Sam, the objections, nobody knew about this and everything, and how we're supposed to know. And our chairman of our board of supervisors made a statement that, you know, apply for a right-to-know application. And that way you'll find out. Hear me out. I applied for a right-to-know application, and I was denied. So that, that is, again, like was just said, you know, the transparency thing that was, that really disturbed me. I wasn't given, really given a good reason as to why. It was basically, you know, trade secrets and all that stuff. All I wanted was a site plan. That's all I wanted, was, was that, was that page off the site plan so I could compare it to some jobs that I've worked on. I'm a, I'm a retired glazer. I've worked on three projects like that. I know what's involved in them. From start to finish, the concrete guy, I, I've worked with that guy every day. So I know what's involved. That's all I wanted to do was compare it to, to the ones that I've worked on, and I was denied. So to say if you wanna know something about something, all you gotta do is apply for a right-to-know. Good luck with that. Good luck with that.
If they gave it to you, it would take a month, a season.
Yeah, and if they gave it to you, half of it would be redacted, so, you know?
I'd like to ask a question. There's just a lot of them. Would you do anything about getting some more chairs so the roof can back some times around?
We'll look into it. I did not look into it. We'll look into it. Thank you.
I have a couple of concerns. Has anybody spoken about, um, hazard issues?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
My name's Sarah Cump. Um, have you anybody talked about hazard issues? Like, if there, I didn't hear too much about being, using the train or whatever. How many trains are gonna come through at the train tracks? What is the...
You don't even need to worry about the train. They're, they're not using rail.
Yeah, and what about the truck, you know, what about if we have some kind of spill or something? I mean, I have pigs and I have animals, and there's water here, and there's towns that in the past were used. But what happened? People have died. Water was polluted. No one could drink it. You know, and I just, I have a lot of concerns about just the environmental part. So yes, the traffic is big, yes, the Amish is a big deal, but I'm just, I just think it's a whole deal.
I mean, you addressed that, that you're...
Um, I did address some environmental issues, but what you're talking about with regards to hazardous substances, depending on what type of industry goes in there, would determine...
They don't know who's going in there.
But it would determine...
They don't know who's going in there. And I wouldn't be saying I'd wanna raise the risk higher if I didn't know who's going in there.
All, all I'm saying is, um, there are federal laws on, uh, community right-to-know, and when you store hazardous substances or use them in your processes, you have to report on that to the, uh, to the state. Each state requires that. And they, depending on the type of substances used, you might have a risk management plan. So it, it does depend on what goes in it. I mean, I totally get it.
And they're saying they don't know who's going in there.
I, I, I hear you.
Mr. Sheen?
Yeah, it's in our ordinance that if a company goes in there, whether it's now or six years from now after the building is sold and somebody moves out, they must provide, um, the fire department MSDS sheets for all the chemicals and properties and anything hazardous that is stored in that building. The fire department must know. It's already warned.
And my question is, is our fire department capable of handling some kind of hazardous spill like that before our community gets hurt? And our firefighters are hurt. Our children, our animals, cattle, horses.
Then maybe you need to go down to the fire department.
I'm too old for that.
We, we could always use help. Uh, Jim Booth, fire chief. Um, we are all trained in hazardous material operations level, um, as well as the county hazard hazmat team. And we would call for assistance on hazardous materials, but we all have, um, operations on the train, which is the initial, um, handling of any hazardous materials. We've done this for a long time now, but recently we've had, uh, overturned tank trucks and things like that that we've been able to...
We're talking about a massive amount of traffic, a massive amount of trucks. Do we have enough firefighters, enough equipment, enough anything to make sure that our community is safe and... That's what I'm worried about. Because I have children that are firefighters. We're thirty-three and thirty-seven. And, you know, they're all trained in that too, but it's not just, you have to have enough people. Do we have enough surrounding fire companies that they're with?
Yes, there, there's enough. We rely on mutual aid as much as our partners in the community and neighbor communities rely on us. We're in the help. We work together day and day. If you're asking me a, a global question, is there enough? There's not. We always rely on the community to come and support us, come and be volunteers in the firehouse. It's a dying dream. And, um, it's a typical question and answer, is there enough? My first answer is no. But we have an intimate, this township, our other several townships, we are capable of handling it along with our mutual aid partners. That's how we've operated for decades, and decades by that means.
I think the fire in the center of town pretty much proved that. That was, you guys, that was your dark shining, you guys.
Yes, my name is Janet Farwick. I've lived here almost fifty years. Seeing the farms become development, so much more traffic. I used to go to work at six-thirty in the morning, and I sold on the road. Now it's constant. Um, one thing I'd like to point out is that we all live, all of us here. Um, one thing I'd like to point out is that we all live, all of us here. Maybe not these gentlemen, but all of us live here in East Nottingham, West Nottingham, Elk, et cetera, live in the Chesapeake Bay watershed. And that's an important thing to know. The Chesapeake Bay, it wants to be cleaned up, you know, there's a huge push to have it cleaned up. Any sediment and chemicals will eventually make the way to the bay. Even if there was a fire, the thumb that might be used to put out a fire, it's not good. It's, I can't even describe. I, I'm not gonna go into that part of it because it's very negative thing. So, you know, I have great concerns about when somebody says, well, they have a hundred trucks, several hundred trucks, thousand trucks. You know, what that kind of pollution will be, will be in, in this area and far reaching. Because we're not that far from the bay at all. Um, I'm assuming, and I'm not a truck driver per se, but I worked in an area where trucks, large trucks would come into the dock and park. And we put up a pipe to have them turn it off because the fumes were so bad. They were killing us in the, in the office. And so I'm just trying to even imagine what multiple hundreds of trucks would cause environmentally. Whether it's air pollution or noise, light, every kind of pollution that you can possibly imagine what that would cause. That's all I can say right now.
Thank you.
What did you get mentioned on your Chesapeake Bay thing is those marshlands there are the headwaters of the northeast region.
I just had a question for the developer. Uh, my name's Jay Reynolds, I live in West Nottingham. You said that, um, you don't, you can't identify who the future tenants are going to be?
Correct.
What type of tenant are you marketing to?
So we haven't started marketing it, but again, loosely when people call us and say you have space available, we're saying we're working on this project, here's what we have. But again, it's only for those select few groups.
If you can identify the type of tenant you're marketing to, that may answer some of our questions on traffic. Because, uh, I think you pointed it out earlier about different types of traffic, the industrial areas and stuff like that. If you're marketing to FedEx, UPS, Amazon, something like that, it's not traffic, you know? I live on Graves Road now. I'm already seeing an increase in traffic coming up and down that road, all right? There's a bridge, small bridge on that road across nine hundred feet. They can't handle truck traffic. What are you gonna do when a bridge starts collapsing? What are eighty thousand pound truck going to cause?
Yeah, that's why we're trying to prevent that as much as possible.
They're gonna make a right on, they're gonna make a right on two seventy-two because they know it's red like they can do it.
And the question bears, I haven't paid a ten year age. How long can take you, Woodland, 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 Woodland?